Council, we'll call the meeting to order for the record. It is January 11th, 2022 at 4:31 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Last time I'm going to do this as, for a while, so my honor to make the motion to adopt the agenda as published.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item is our consent agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
We need to remove item number three from the consent agenda. With that said, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda by, with the removal of item three. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. Next item up is item move from the consent agenda, which is item number three. Councilman Borton.
Just in prep for today, I saw that short agreement and had a question for legal or Public Works about the Inluuwe fee that's paid for one street light that would have otherwise been required. And I just didn't recall if this is part of a program that we've adopted, or is it kind of a one-off, random, unique situation? Normally, we require a street light at a location and no Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton, now, Warren Stewart is supposed to be online, but he did reach out to me. Based on your question, we've done many of these actually quite often, usually because there's a couple of things that trigger it. It's part of a future roadway expansion, and so we don't want to put the light in now, and then would later then have to move it and incur that second expense. So that's one reason. Secondarily, sometimes the agency that's in charge of the roadway, and in this particular case, it's ITD, because it's near Meridian Road is where they're supposed to go. They don't like putting in one, one light. What happens, to be honest with you, when you put in one light, people tend to run into it. You put in a bunch of lights, people tend to avoid them. So they don't like putting in one at a time. So what they do is they ask us to bank it and do it as part of a larger project, either in conjunction with them or future expansion. And the best example I can give you of that is that's how we put the lights in on Chindon along the Winco Project. We had a number of D and Luuwe agreements that had been in place for a number of years. Took all that funds and put it towards those lights. So it's a pretty common practice we've done over the years.
Councilman Borton.
Mr. Mayor, is it, the lights then would go in, but just at a later date as part of a larger project, as opposed to there'll never be a light?
Yes, okay. There will be a light there. It may be a year from now or further down the road, depending on the roadway and such. And we, again, same thing we've done with our safe paths to schools. We have a lot of those where we want them in neighborhoods, but then we want to kind of do it in a systematic way that makes sense for kids walking to school and things like that. So we'll pool that money and then do one project and put them all in at one.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the questions. Is there a motion on this item? Councilman Burton.
Move that we approve item number three that was on the consent that we just spoke about.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to approve item three from the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the item is agreed to. Next item up is from our police department fiscal year 2022 budget amendment in amount of $27,376 for the Idaho Humane Society contract.
Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. I don't remember when we last met and had the Humane Society here giving a presentation, if everybody was here or not. So if you would just give me a minute, just to kind of give you a quick recap of how we got here. When we went through the budget planning last year for this year's budget, there were no discussions had with the Idaho Humane Society. Now, as we look back at it, they didn't reach out to us. We didn't reach out to them. And as, as a point and matter, when we placed this money in the budget, we simply placed in the same amount we have for the prior year, and that was $549,420.96. And so we put that in this year's budget. Once the budget was approved, we heard from the Humane Society and they wanted to raise our rates for their services. Obviously, that caused quite a bit of consternation, given the timing of that request. As a result, Emily Kane, Captain Stokes, and myself paid a visit to the Humane Society out at Dorman, out at the airport, to look at their operations and understand what they do there and how they do that. Look at the call load in the city, look at the response times. We really spent quite a bit of time trying to educate ourselves about their business operations and how their service drives, what we do here in Meridian and what they do here in Meridian. And they came forward to city council to do a presentation. Prior to doing that, they did reduce the cost by 25% about how much they were going to increase the budget for the Humane Society services. So after the presentation, council approved that, we then spent the next three months, October, November, and December, putting together the contract with legal and police and the Humane Society, and we all agreed that we would continue to pay them at last year's rate for October, November, and December. We are now here moving into the first part of the year. That's all been done. But the cost of the contract for the next part of this year is 576, 796, 71. So we are short $27,375, 75. So we're coming in front of you tonight to make up that gap between we've already paid what the increased cost was and where we're at now. So I'll stand for any questions, if that makes sense. I know there's a lot there. I didn't want to unpack too much. Excuse everybody.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Do you know, when, with that amount, do we pay that all in one lump sum, or is that divvied out, you know, an equal share every, every month?
Equal share every month. It's the way my understanding, yes.
And then, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
This allotment, then, does that just get moved into the cycle and divvied out over the remaining months of the fiscal year?
That's correct. So, and as a footnote, we have put a tickler into the finance contract software. So we are going to reach out to the Humane Society as we go into budget discussions this year. So we don't have a repeat of this. And they understand deeply that if they're going to do anything in terms of raising any type of rate, that they're, need to come here and talk about that in front of us and have those discussions. It just can't happen in a vacuum. So we have circled back around and addressed that. So you shouldn't see it happen again.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Captain, I've been pretty vocal. I don't think that the Humane Society does a very good job of customer service for our citizens. My interactions with them have been less than comparable to the service we get from the city. How's their interactions with you and your department?
So, you know, every time we have a request from them, they give it to us. They provide a statistical analysis every month on all the calls that they go to in the city, what their response times are, how many animals they take in. We get a detailed analysis every month, as does the clerk's office, everything they're doing in our city. Their response times on average, for example, in December, was 21 minutes for all the calls in the city of Meridian. That's coming out of their dispatch center. They took in 103 animals in one month from our city. Now, those are captures and those are self surrenders. And so we watch that and we're comfortable with those numbers. We have had discussions because we have heard some complaints here and there about their response to calls and timeliness. You know, it's like anything else, you know, it's how busy they are, the priority of calls. If they have a dog attack in one part of the accounting where someone's been bit, and then you've got a dog at large in downtown Meridian, you have to weigh constantly where you're putting those resources and what may seem real important to you. We don't know what's going on in the other side of the county. And like any other place, they have staffing issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think, Captain, it speaks, you speak to, kind of, I think, was the feedback that I've heard from the public, which is that I think they're managing the calls that they're actually dispatching. The feedback I get is that oftentimes, when our citizens call, they're dissuaded from actually formalizing a complaint, that nobody has to come out. And that's the piece that I really struggle with. We wouldn't, in any other department in the city, we wouldn't discourage our citizens from utilizing our services. And so I haven't been supportive of this budget amendment. I haven't decided if I'm going to be in favor of it or not. But I think that's the piece, at least my ask for, for you, is that we're doing a good job of engaging with them. So they understand the expectations of our citizens, of your department, of the council. They've got a lot of room to improve when it comes to supporting our citizens.
I appreciate the feedback. I will, I will, we don't know what we don't know. And if we have somebody that's unhappy with something, certainly it is our desire to remedy that. And, and if somebody comes forward and says they've had a bad experience or they're not liking the way this is unfolding, we need to understand that and we can then hold them accountable because we're the customer. So, yeah, I would agree with you 100%.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Are they doing any sort of self-assessing? Do they have a section of their website that encourages feedback? Are they getting feedback from their customer? I mean, is there any, I mean, are they actively receiving input from the public and seeking it versus just waiting for somebody to take the time to make a complaint? You know, most websites, websites you see will have a link that says, give us some feedback, or is there anything? I should probably look at that more closely. But do you have any idea if they're engaging in that kind of business practice?
It's a great question. It would surprise me if they weren't. Looking at their operation, they seem to have covered everything that we asked of them. I simply don't know that. I would have to go to their website or reach out and ask to them. I do know that they provide extra patrols in our city parks, because that's one of the things we've asked them to do. And last month, when they sent me the report, it outlined the extra patrols they had done in Settlers Park and, and Cleaner Park and such like that, because there'd been an increase in complaints of dogs at large. So I know that they're listening in that respect, but in terms of feedback, I would have to look and get back to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just a question, Captain. Do they put in that report any returns back to the community? They have a program where they, feral animals are brought in cats primarily and then released back after they're fixed, thankfully. But I didn't know if they keep track of that as well.
So I have the report. I mean, I can, you know, share it with you. They took in 103 animals last month. Two of those were wildlife, so that left 101 cats and dogs. I don't know what the ratio is. Out of those, if I remember correctly, they returned nine back. Now, there are quite a few self surrenders where citizens of the city bring their cats, their dogs, whatever, and say, we don't want animals anymore. They're your problem. Here you go. And they dump them off. So they get quite a few of those.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I recall from the conversation last time, it felt like there was an opportunity to revisit our own fees that we charge people when their pets escape continuously, or they surrender their pets. I guess I'd ask if there's been a follow-up on that, or maybe just a request, if we have an applicable ordinance, if we could receive a copy of that.
Hey, it's a great question. So I'm in touch with Emily Kane. It is on our list of things to work on. The holidays being what they were, and this happened, we just haven't had a chance to circle back around. But it is on our list of things to do and bring to you. So you'll be seeing that at some point in the future. Ours were the lowest in the valley when it came to kenneling costs and return costs.
Thanks for taking a look at that.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
This is probably the, my only begrudgingly budget amendment I'm going to make a motion to approve. So I move we approve the police department fiscal year 2022 budget in the amount of $27,376.
Second the motion.
I have motion of second to approve item seven, budget amendment. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I don't know if my second was begrudgingly taken, but pretty close, I think.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe an ask for, for you or council president, our new police department liaison, is maybe you all can connect on this in the next couple of months. I'd be supportive of a budget amendment for a feasibility study to see if they're the right vendor for us. There are other organizations that can serve this need, or if it's cost beneficial for us for the level of service we can provide our citizens to bring this back in-house.
Yeah, I can tell you that is on the chief's to-do, and we're just constantly being monitored. But they are the only vendor in the valley other than ourselves, or consortium of all of us. And there's not, appear to be consortium of the willing throughout the valley to take this on ourselves yet.
If I could add, that's correct. It is on the chief's radar. We have, in the past, studied this a couple of times with finance to run the numbers on building your own facility, adoption, however you want to run it, what your levels of service would be, how many people, all those types of things. And at that time, it didn't pencil out financially for us to do anything. And it's something we're always aware of and look at, and we will certainly continue to look at it. But we've run this a couple of times to the ground, and it just hasn't worked out for us. And everybody's kind of there, too. What I hear in the tea leaves. Eagle, Star, Kuna, Boise, Meridian, all use IHX, right? That's, that's what they're, and the county. And that's what we just simply do. And so, just kind of where we're at right now is a valley.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Feedback to that. I don't anticipate that doing it ourselves would be cheaper, but I do believe us doing it ourselves is a better service for our citizens. And I think that's where I'm focused on, what it's worth. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Do we have any idea if the other cities have had similar challenges and what they might be, how they might be addressing them?
There have, from what I hear, there have been some concerns from the other city, cities about cost increases. They've all went on, just like we have, and talked with them about them and, and move forward with their contracts. I don't know what the levels of service are like there. Us in Boise have the highest call loads in the valley, given the size and the number of pets and such. And so when you talk about Star and Kuna and Eagle, it's not really an apples to oranges type of thing. And so I think we have to be careful there when we compare. Certainly, everybody's costs go up as call loads and growth and such happen. And so those are the things we face in anything. It's, it's tricky, though. But yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I'd like to just state that I don't have a, a challenge with, with the city contributing or paying a higher contract if we feel like the level of service is comparable to a resident. So it just, for me, in this consideration, it's really not as much about the dollars in relationship to our budget and where those funds are going as much as it is. You know, if, if, if there's an equivalent factor between the amount of service being provided and the increase in cost to them to provide the service, that's one thing. But if our services decreasing, the, the quality of service is decreasing while our costs are increasing, that's another conversation.
Council, any further questions or comments on the motion? All right, let's quick to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton, Cavanagh, Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
All ayes, motion carries. None of those sounded begrudgingly. But we understand. Council, next item is item eight, which is with our community development. I just want to preface this conversation with, the conversation was intended to be with West City School District, not with our staff. Unfortunately, you know, we, we received the data from West Data, from the stuff, but they haven't even talked to their own body yet. So they want to have a conversation with their own body. I don't know if they will change their processes. I don't know if they'll change the data. Who knows what is forthcoming from the school district? But after they meet, they have agreed that they will come here and talk to the, the council about the information that they provide. So I'm, I'm suggesting that in the conversation is Miranda is not here to answer the school district's questions. And we'd like to keep this focused on the information that's been provided by them in the document that they shared and/or Miranda's responses. Any larger conversations are yet to be had with the appropriate people. But, you know, no disrespect, I don't think that having a conversation with ourself in the room is really going to benefit a lot of us in, on this topic that was noticed today. So with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Are you, do you want to delay this conversation then until West Data is in attendance? Are you, this is like a, an appetizer to a yet-to-be-determined main course?
That was my office's recommendation, was to delay the, it was determined to leave it on. But I, I'm trying to set some parameters about, let's keep the conver, what, what we can official, what we can actually provide back to you is not answer questions about what West Data has, what decisions they've made, or what decisions they will make, or information that they may or may not want to provide, that we want them to provide.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Appreciate this direction this evening. I appreciate the guidance. The only question that I would have is if there's a member of council that has a question for Miranda when she, while she's here, that is, you know, in relation to the document that was provided by Dr. Bob that we've all read. And so that, that would probably be, I would focus on this evening.
Exactly. Let's, let's try to keep the focus to what we can, can control on this conversation. Or if there's information you want Miranda to make sure to tell them prior to them coming, so that they're aware. I'm just not sure what we're going to see is what they provide is even what we're going to see from them moving forward. So with that, happy to turn this over to Miranda for any opening comments that she'd like to make.
I think my only opening comment, Mayor, would be the, thank you for that armor. I'll do my best to take forward any questions you have, but I can't speak on behalf of the districts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you. I understand we can't speak on behalf of the district, but I do think we should have a good grip on our own data in terms of, is my, my first question would be, what is the total pipeline of new development that we have already approved? How many single family homes and how many multifamily homes citywide is, what's that number? That's my first question. And then my second question is, what percentage of the total do we issue in COs per year? Or what is some other metric of how many houses out of our pipeline have historically been delivered on an annual basis?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, sorry. So I didn't pull the full city numbers for permits issued in anticipation of last week's meeting. I did pull for everything south of the interstate. And Joe Dodson gave those numbers. And there are, there were 4,176 single-family units entitled, and there are 1,224 multifamily units entitled. Of those, there's 2,900 single-family units remaining to be built, and 1,112 multifamily units remaining to be built. And then we would, you can extrapolate out the number of students with the student generation rate. As far as the absorption rate or the rate those develop at, that's really hard to determine. Depends on the size of the development. So for specific developments, a small development of 21 houses is obviously going to develop more quickly than a 300-unit development, as well as where the development is at. So something with more service availability, those infill developments will develop faster. Typically, there's property ownership, supply chain. It's really hard to determine. I would say, on average, three to 10 years, which I know is a large gap, but it's hard to give you anything a lot more consistent than that. I did, for building permits, we issued over the last three years, between 1,800 and 2,000 building permits a year for single-family. I believe it, that was, I believe that number was for single-family homes, but that was for residential building permits. So we're pretty consistent on building permits over the last few years anyways, of what we've issued every year. And we are working on some larger analysis of what those numbers citywide look like.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just dig into that a bit. So, sorry, just so I understand, so regardless of the depth of the pipeline of approvals, the amount that is permitted, you're saying has been consistently around 2,000 per year citywide?
Over the last three years.
Over the last three years, okay. And then, yeah, I think the citywide number is important. And I'll kind of, just for the benefit of the group, kind of discuss what I was emailing with you about. So what I'd like to see ideally in terms of data to come out of this are some scenarios, so we can sort of understand the boundaries of what we're looking at. So if there's just the developments that have been approved today, and I'm not worried about right now, I'm worried about like three years from now, and there are no new bonds. I understand the district has calculated their program capacity. They should have updated enrollment numbers. We know the amount of students that graduate from high school every year, an idea of that. We should be able to, looking at historical data, project a percentage of our pipeline that becomes delivered every year. And I'd like to just see a projection of, assuming all those things and they're big assumptions, what is the capacity that we're really looking at if nothing changes? Is it a catastrophe in three years? Is it not a catastrophe? Is it that we would absorb the amount that we've already approved? I just want to understand an extreme scenario. I don't agree that the I don't agree that them not issuing, I, I think them not issuing a bond is a mistake and not the right approach. I'd hope that they would do that. But I'd like to understand if they do not, what are we really looking at? So I would like to see the citywide numbers. And some more information about the percentage of what is approved that typically is historic, based on historical numbers delivered per year. I do feel like there's a lot of variability around that, but we should be able to generate an assumption around that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. Citywide, we are looking at entitlements, COs and permits issued. District wide, West Data is looking at build outs district wide of the five municipalities, what's coming down the pipeline. So they do have those numbers in their formula that they'll present when they come.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
One that asked since we were here to keep it on the agenda. And, and I guess if the first question might be addressed towards council is. The premise of this discussion is that there is a grave concern that under the scenarios, and I totally agree with Councilman Schrader on running some scenarios. But under one scenario, there's not another school built in Meridian for over 10 years. And in that scenario, there's no bond passed and we are done building schools. In that path, does that give us any reason for concern to change anything that we do in any manner? In council. Okay, I, I've always assumed for me that that isn't an acceptable scenario. And that requires a different path by us, uh, which would necessitate us running these, this analysis to determine what's the breakpoint that would require us to do things differently. I, I assume that we're all of the mindset that that's, that scenario would be of grave concern. And for that reason, we need to do what we're doing now. But if we're not all on the same page, that that's a problem, then this is just academic.
And, and again, just to keep us focused, this is about the numbers that West Data is providing based upon their changing of student generation rates. You're on a very much more macro, larger conversation. I, I just want to make sure that we're staying focused on West Data is changing the numbers that they're generating for development. And that's what the first conversation with staff is about, is just about that information for your reports. The other part is, again, much larger conversation where Miranda doesn't need to be sitting down here having the conversation, be part of the conversation, because it's really not on her. It is on you all for your views on how West Data is operating and decisions that are being made. So just again, want to keep it focused on the student generations per household as West Data is changing how they are presenting the information to you. Councilman Borton.
So to that, I mean, we can internally say we got nothing from West Data. We could, with the data we already have, you put, you put student population on the X axis. You've got your, um, your permit issuance. We know what the student growth rate is for the district. We know what our building, residential building permit issuance is historically over 20 years. And we know what capacities generated by each bond from 2005 going forward. And you could literally graph this and just you assume that the trends remain the same. I mean, it's illustrative only perhaps. But we know how we've grown. And so we could graph that, we would know our student capacity, design capacity of these schools, um, sort of staircase upwards. And what I envision this, if you graphed it, what we would be seeing is you get to 2021 and that design capacity is flat. And where it has historically over 25 years jumped up as we passed a bond, created new schools. What if it doesn't? And the delta between your student growth and the design capacity grows and grows and grows. Councilman Ogden knows the double shifting back in the eighties. Ultimately, you get to some of these scenarios. So even without data from the school district, we can come up with some forecasts.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Miranda.
So Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I want to speak first to your first question. In the letter, when the West Data has their max capacity, this school will be at 100% capacity. All of that is assuming, as you said, nothing is built for 10 years. That's not a realistic scenario. We've not, it's not realistic. West Data has said it's not realistic that nothing will be built in 10 years. So, um, they, they do put that in and I'll let them speak more to that. But it is illustrative of if nothing was built, this is what would happen. So that's what that data point is. The second question regarding, um, what their options are, there are a lot of options, um, as you said, and they'll speak to those. But I do want to be, when we're talking about these things, remember that just because nothing is built in Meridian doesn't mean a school built in Eagle doesn't serve our, our needs because enrollment shifts. So we need to make sure that when we're looking at the growth, that even though we are the city of Meridian and that's all that we can control, we are looking at, if we're going to talk about West Data's data, we have to look at West Data as a whole.
Councilman Borton.
To that point, I totally agree. And, um, I think that, that probably has a negative impact on bond pass. I think one of the next schools is in Star. And the difficulty in the landscape in this, in our community, during the election, I feel like passing a bond, it's a different animal out there, different community, their appetite for supporting our schools tragically is maybe not where it used to be. So I'm not nearly as confident as you are that, um, there's going to be, there's going to be a bond pass. That this, our community would support it.
And I won't ask you to comment on how support, how, how, how much you view a bond or not in passing. That's not your.
You're saying you won't ask me to comment or you want me to comment?
I don't need you to.
Oh, okay.
Well, now you think it's, uh, it's likely or not that a bond will be passed or presented.
If I can comment on one thing, Mr. Mayor, there are a lot of tools other than building new schools. So that's just something to keep in mind. West Data can speak to what those tools are, but there are a lot of tools that can come before we talk about building new schools.
Councilman Schrader.
I guess I'd, I'd love to understand the range of tools that's available. So there's portables, right? They could build portables and we could figure out the price tag is associated with that. We've had them redraw their boundaries. I understand that they've already done that. Hopefully they could continue to do that. I guess what other tools are there? Maybe I'm just not following.
So from my perspective, the, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, there are the, the portables, the redrawing boundaries, bussing students, going to shifts, um, converting choice schools to traditional schools, which is an option that they took in the north and central. And I'm hopeful to say that when I asked Marcy, have you considered switching those in the south? They said that's not a discussion topic. So my opinion, they're, they haven't even discussed that as an option yet. So there are other tools that can be brought in before we look at building.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just to dig into that a little bit. So, um, it sounds like you're not as worried as the thing that I'm worried about. But I still think it's important to do the analysis. To me, the purpose of running scenarios is to understand the outer edges of what is possible if different events do or do not happen. And I think we need to understand, to Councilman Borton's point, what the breaking point is where district wide, we do not have capacity. So if their program capacity numbers are available, for example, if district wide, there are no bonds issued in three years, we're looking at hundreds more students than they have capacity for. I would want to know that. So I feel like we have to do the analysis, assuming there isn't a bond, just to know the answer of what a catastrophic situation would be and what the indicators would be for us to look for of when we have reached that point. And if we don't do that analysis and we just assume that they'll pass a bond, I think that could be a really big error. On our part, I think they should, I'd be very disappointed if they didn't attempt to pass one. But I think the analysis is independent of whether or not they do move that forward. We need to know that.
Yeah, I think those are great questions to talk to the board about when we meet with the board and, and have those conversations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Especially, you know, what the enrollment numbers are, you know, if, if, uh, the enrollment numbers are the same or from the last bond, I don't know, it would be very prudent of the school district to ask for another bond from, from the citizens of Meridian if enrollment's not growing. I think that that bond would fail miserably. So I think before they issue a bond, I think it's important to know what that enrollment looks like, where this, where, where the school district is growing. And as a taxpayer in the city, if the enrollment isn't growing, why the heck am I going to vote for something that's, that they don't need? And then you, and you, you go back to the other tools that we spoke about, that's what they need to do. And in the past, they've done it every single time. They react, they figure it out. So I'm really interested to see what that, that enrollment number is compared to what it was at the last bond. And if it's the same or even close, they're not going to ask for another bond and I wouldn't expect them to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Councilwoman Schrader mentioned the solutions that the district had, um, had briefly given us in a letter on a specific land use application recently, but also that, that Dr. Bob mentioned. And, um, I, I wouldn't, I would highly encourage and support the district to identify critical areas across the district that need to be addressed first. Make those a priority and, um, be looking at specific solutions for those now. We're, we're behind the curve in, in southeast Meridian. Where we, this should have been done three years ago in the Hillsdale area. I'm, I'm not as, yes, current enrollment right now says that, that, that they can support the amount of students that are coming in, maybe even for the next one or two school years. The pro, you, you had sent a really great email, um, kind of differentiating the difference, explaining the difference between program enrollment and, and building capacity and, and helping us understand that. And that they go off of program enrollment and not off of building capacity. If that's the standard that they use, that's okay. That helps us even better to clarify exactly how many students can be, you, um, it can, uh, be taught in a particular building, in a particular school. We're okay with using that as, if program enrollment is what they use as kind of their standard of the number of students, then when they share that information with us, it has to be clear that that's what that is and that it's not building capacity. Cause I think that's a confusion for the public and really isn't even something that we've discussed as a council as being that the difference is when we see these numbers and we're trying to analyze them for the purpose of a land use application, right? So that needs to be clarified in their letters. But if they're going to recommend that they, that there are specific solutions, when, when they're sending a letter on a specific land use application, I feel like it's upon the district to say, and this is how these solutions will be addressed if we get above program capacity for this particular school. If they can't do that, they should be doing that for critical areas across the district. And that's what I would like to see come out of our meeting with West Data is what are you doing with schools that are at, at or close to program capacity? With these specific solutions that you're putting out there and you're saying that can be done. As you said, there's many of them. What's happening? Is that going to be part of their presentation? Are they actually going to come and say, here's our plan for Hillsdale Elementary? Here's our plan for Mountain View. We're over capacity at Mountain View, both program and building capacity at Mountain View right now. If West Data isn't bringing that information to us, we have no other obligation, we have no other option as a city than to be obligated to really consider not approving, um, developments. I, I don't know what, I mean, I'm just, I'm putting it out there. I know that, that this isn't Miranda's, um, responsibility to give me an answer to this, but I just want to publicly say that's, that's where I'm at in this conversation. And, and to set the expectation of what we want out of our conversation with West Data.
Council, any other questions for Miranda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
This is, as part of that, Miranda, um, I could take just some context for the reason why, for me, it's a big deal is, I just, I don't accept the fact that, and I'm not saying you do, but I'm just saying the reason why I'm being a stinker on this issue is a student is probably one of the most critical resources of our community. And whether we have kids or not, we all, I believe, have a moral obligation to provide them what's necessary to be successful. And they're not widgets and they're not firewood and we don't stack them up. And the mere fact that we could put 40 in a classroom, you could probably put 50. Now, you could put them in the hall, you could double shift them, you can have portables. I, I'm interested in those solutions. None of that is terribly acceptable in this debate. It shirks the responsibility. That's kind of the, the core of why this is a big deal. And the, the connection to that is whatever the new data that the school district provides us, what if we said, so what? I mean, who cares what the student generation rate is? Are we ever going to do anything different because of it? Ever? And if we would never, ever consider ever denying an application or requiring something different because of the data they provide, then what's the point of this whole conversation? It kind of, I'll finish where I start is having this is premised upon the idea that there might be data out there and there might be information the school district provides us that would be helpful that determine whether or not an application should be approved or not. And let's be honest and say it right now, if that would never impact our decision on an application, then let's just stop. It would impact it for me. That's why I'm interested. But all of this hard work that's being done, what's it matter? Matters to me, but hopefully it matters to everybody else who use this tool.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Miranda, is that possible? Uh, I think you and I had had a conversation about another, another factor, as Joe mentioned, if you were to graph this, is for the city to, to not only maybe look at permits issued, building permits issued, but look at what we expect the absorption to be from developer information on phasing plans and whatnot. And I, that's a big, huge amount of data and staff time, um, to put that information together. But I think if we looked at really smaller areas of Meridian and did it really incrementally, that that information would considerably help West Data to even then understand micro areas, uh, within the district or micro, you know, within one elementary school, um, where they can figure out how many students will potentially be coming in based on builder's phasing and the, um, and the expected, um, amount of new properties that will be, um, built within a certain timeframe, as you, I think you had said, three to 10 years or so. That the analysis that was done by an applicant last week that we had come in and, and there was a letter that was done that said, we anticipate so many students this year, so many students this year, so many students this year, would love to see more of that kind of data from the applicants as they come in. But where we're currently at, if there's any way the city could at least look at the, the two or three, there's, there's only, from what I can tell, two or three schools within our district that where we're at this critical need to have this kind of detailed information. I'd love to see the city be able to provide that information to the district so that they can even get more specific about how exactly how many students are we going to be over capacity? And, and, and at what year are we going to be over capacity in a particular area?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, they, they do look at that information now. So that is something that they'll, um, show you when they do the formula. That's something that's been looked at for years. It's been in their formula when they redraw boundaries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I just think part of the challenge is like, look at a development like Century Farm. Maybe it was supposed to take a decade and shoot if it didn't happen in four years. That's why I think the historical delivery percentage is really important too, to compare to the developers' phasing plans, because there seems to be an acceleration of a lot of the phasing plans. And, um, I just wanted to state, you know, my mindset, I believe that this is a worthwhile data exercise because I believe, uh, for me as a leader, that we should adjust our behavior in terms of our growth, or at least consider different options that we would not have normally considered if we are in a situation where we are unable to provide students with an adequate education in Meridian. That's just me, but I just wanted to state that, love that mindset as well.
Also, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Miranda. And we hope to have the district, uh, staff here at the end of the month is, is our goal. Based upon the conversation they have with their leadership on the information they're providing. With that, we are at the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burnt.
We, uh, um, during the meeting.
Have motion to adjourn on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it, we are adjourned.
Council will call the meeting in order for the record is January 11, 2022 is 6 o'clock PM. We will be in tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Yeah. Next time is the Pledge of Allegiance. If at all, please rise and join us in the pledge. We didn't have anyone sign up for the community invocation, so we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
No changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. Squirt, we have anyone set up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to action items. First item up is installation of elected city council members. So for this evening, we will have our city clerk, Chris Johnson swear in, the three city council members. Do it down at the podium. After each one is sworn in, make sure you get the pictures that you'd like with your family at that point in time. Or not.
Friends.
Or friends, friends also work. And then we'll, after all, everyone is sworn in, we'll invite each of the members up to the diaspora and comments they'd like to make at that point in time. So with that, we will begin with item 1A, the swearing in of city councilman Joe Borton.
All right. Repeat after me. I, Joe Borton.
I, Joe Borton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Idaho. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member of the city of Meridian. According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, next item will be the swearing in of city councilman Treg Burnt.
Repeat after me. I, Treg Burnt.
Treg Burnt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the great state of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
Of the city of Meridian according to the best of my ability.
Of the city of Meridian.
Best of my ability, so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
And for our third swearing in of the evening will be the installation of swearing in of city councilman Luke Cavanagh.
Repeat after me. I, Lucas A. Cavanagh, do solemnly swear.
I, Lucas A. Cavanagh.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
The Constitution of the State of Idaho.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
That I will faithfully.
Of the city of Meridian according to the best of my ability.
Of the city of Meridian according to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Thank you.
So first up, I'd like to recognize Councilman Joe Borton for any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, I'm honored to be sworn in to start a fourth term in Meridian City Council. First sworn in in 2005, and it's been wonderful to watch our community change and grow and be a part of that. My family is sick in a variety of ways, so I've got my lovely wife Sharon, who's been such a great supporter, is not feeling well. My parents, Jim and Chris, not feeling well. My brother Jimmy's not well. It's a mess, so I'm good. So I appreciate my brother Treg Burnt helping out here with the swearing in ceremony. So I'm excited for the next four years as much as I was in 2005. From an early age, I've been ingrained with the belief that we have a moral responsibility to give back to the community. We take a lot in what our city provides to us. We're safe. It's a clean community. It's a friendly community, and we treat each other like family. And that's all that I benefit from, so I feel I've got an obligation, if I can help out and give back and be involved in providing that for others, then I'll continue to do so. And I'm as energized about what our community has coming forward as I was 15, 20 years ago. And I look forward to continuing the work with the greatest city council and mayor in the state of Idaho, bar none. So thank you for all the support, appreciate it, and I look forward to the next four years.
Councilman Burnt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity to serve for another four years. The last four years have been the honor of my life. Very excited to listen and to serve the citizens. Of Meridian. We've done a lot the last four years, and we have a lot more to do, and so I'm excited to be here. But as an elected official and those who've gone through campaigns, we certainly don't do it alone. And I'd like to thank first and foremost. Excuse me. My family. Tiffany, my wife is here along with my daughter Bridgette, my son Cole, and I'm sure online somewhere at the University of Utah. My. My daughter Annie is watching, so grateful for you. We certainly couldn't do it without you. Being elected official requires a lot of time, a lot of away time from family, a lot of meetings, a lot of late Tuesday nights during the campaign. A lot of knocking doors, a lot of emotion, and I gotta tell you. Um, Tiff. She's a great support system, and she's a great wingman, and she's been great. And I say thank you to you, Tiff, for all that you do. But again, with my campaign staff and those who helped out, thank you so much. Thank you to my treasurer, Mr. Hoagland, you know, starting QB, Meridian High School way back in the day. I don't know the number. My kitchen cabinet who told me where to go and what to do, but ultimately, thank you to the citizens of Meridian. You know, those that voted for me and even those who didn't. It's overwhelming to know that you have the support of so many people who have entrusted in you the duties of this mantle that we carry. And so. Very grateful for that and know that I won't let you down. Again, thanks to my friends up here on the dais, those who supported me. Thank you, Mayor. And wanted to say thank you to the city staff, too. We certainly couldn't do what we do without everything that the city does and the staff and the leadership team. You guys are the best of the best. And it's been a true honor to serve you and work with you, and I can't wait to do it for another four years, so thanks again.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to Council President Burnt for at least opening up some vulnerability. I think there's something in the water tonight, and I appreciate your heart on that. I. Tonight's kind of been a long time coming. We were supposed to do it last week, but this election has been weird for me. It's been different. I think this campaign season, so many people, we typically focus about where we're going as a community. And so much of it was focused on what our council has done over the past four years, what people have liked, what people have had some disagreements on. And so rather than looking forward, I've been doing a lot of. A lot of reflection and recognize that while we do a lot of great work, many in our community want to see us improve. And I want to improve. I think we all want to improve. Make no mistake, I think the city of Meridian is. Something. Something in the water. The best place to live and work, the best place to retire, the best place to raise a family, for me. While I recognize that we all have room to improve. I look at this as a. As a get-to job. We get to do this. I get to do this. I have to take out the trash in the morning, right? I. I have to pay my taxes, but we get to do this. We get to come to this beautiful building. We get to work with the best and brightest, and. That's not lost on me, and I want to thank all of you for helping to contribute to that. And I'd like to thank a few other people if I can, and because my campaign ran so long, I may take a few extra minutes, though I hope you'll indulge me. The. The Cavanaghs talk a lot about the four tenants. I'm sorry, folks, it's been a rough day. We talk about four tenants, our faith, our family, our community, and our careers. And so I want to start by thanking. My friends are gonna make so much fun of me. My kids are gonna make so much fun of me. I want to thank my God and Creator. Mayor, I also want to thank you. When you came into office, you maintained that we were going to start every meeting in prayer. I know that was probably not an easy decision. You probably heard from people on both sides, and I'm so proud that you've continued to do that. And what's interesting is that this campaign, my faith was questioned by other Christians unlike I've ever seen before, and that was really hard. But make no mistake, I am as strong in my faith today as I was today. I'm proud to be a Christian. I'm proud to have taken this oath of office on a Bible, and I'm proud that we are a God-fearing and God-loving community, so I want to start there. There's a handful of folks I want to thank when it comes to family. I'm going to start with my amazing rock star of a bride. We need more Adrian Cavanaghs in this world, and all that she does to take care of our family, to take care of me. I had my house painted this year, and I was talking to the painter like, man, because he was working late and it was on a weekend, and I'm like, man, you've spent so much time sacrificing for your family. And he's like, no, 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 you've got it wrong. It's my family that sacrifices so that I can build my business, and. I'm just thankful for the sacrifice that my family makes so that I can do this. I have two amazing boys, Gunner, who was barely this tall. When I first came to work in this building, my wife was cleaning and found this today. This is Gunner's campaign shirt. When I very first ran to office, I think you could maybe fit it over one arm today. But this community raised Gunner. This community implored the values that we hold so dear on him. And while I know that he's growing up and doing amazing things, and I'm very proud of him, I know it's possible he will one day leave Meridian, which breaks my heart. But I also feel really confident that wherever he goes, he will be very, very successful because of the values that this community has imparted on him, like they did on me as a child. And then there's Porkchop, which, what's there to say about Porkchop? Here's a kid who is my best sounding board about what we need to do for families. My talk about parks comes from Porkchop. He's a live scientist, and he knows what's best for our community, and I'm so grateful that he's at this fun age that maybe he could fit into this shirt. A few more folks, and then I'll wrap up. And I want to touch on this because during the campaign, it was weird. I was criticized because I took donations from a place called Las Vegas. Oh, the humanity, Las Vegas. And, and what those that criticized me didn't know is that I have family there, family that I chose. The family that will make fun of me for this, some of the finest men who have taught me the difference between right and wrong. And because they got beat up for helping to support me because they care about Meridian as much as I do. These poor guys, it's feel like a doting father. Every time I'm around them, I'm sure you guys aren't going to believe what we're doing in Meridian. We're doing this, we're doing that, we're building this. And so I'd like to thank a few folks, my good friend, Dave Brown, Aviva Zaki, both who have backed me and supported me before I ever thought this was even a gem of an idea. A fine South resident, Joe Shear and his family, who knows what makes South Meridian so great, Marcos Green, Brian Rector. And a man who was really like a mentor to me and that's Travis Murphy. I know they're all watching. I know they're all texting each other, making fun of me and I'll take my lumps on the chin when I see you all next. Couple more, because I don't think that they get enough recognition. I want to thank our development community. You know, we have, we're very lucky to have thoughtful local people that are invested in making Meridian great the same way we are. And there's folks in this room that have helped to support me, folks that I've said no to their projects, folks I've said I don't like those projects, but they believe that where we're headed as a community and with us up here is important. So you don't get enough thanks and appreciation. And I want to, I want to thank you all. Mayor, Council, Joe said, you got, we're the hardest working group in local government and I'm so proud to be a part of this team. And you all work overtime to make me look a lot better than I deserve. You cover for me when I put my foot in my mouth nearly every Tuesday. You hear me go on and on and on in city council meetings like I'm doing tonight and you've come back for more. You really demonstrate that we've got a lot of grit over grind. I want to thank our city employees who are the heart of our city and demonstrate heart over hustle. I'm proud to consider myself a Meridian city employee, a former city employee, and I know how hard you work to make our city so, so great. And lastly, I, I, a couple more. Sorry. I'd like to thank, thank my employer. This takes a lot of time away from my day job and the fine folks at ACS Can. My amazing team and my remarkable boss that afforded me this opportunity. They're allowing me to do my dream job if it's only just one night a week and I'm so grateful for them. And, and lastly, to the voters, again, this was a very unique race. And I recognize there's almost as many people that are excited to see me here as people who would rather have seen someone else in this seat. And so for those that supported me, I say thank you. I hope I, I work the next four years to validate your trust in me. And for the other half that didn't think I was the right fit in this seat, I'm looking forward to having those four years to show you that I'm, I'm worth supporting and our community is worth supporting. So Council, I thank you all, our family, those who come in week in and week out. Our emergency responders are caring citizens and those who just care about Meridian. Those that have taught me to be kind, I think that's the piece that I'm going to try and do over the next four years is to be kind to others. I encourage you all to do so. So with that, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you all and indulging me a few moments. Thank you all.
Council, I don't want to deprive anybody else to like make any comments, but I, I, I would suggest we take a recess unless someone else would like to speak at this time, so they could say goodbye to their family who's come down here and get some composure in the room this evening.
Who started that? It's my mom's fault. She's watching.
I'll, I'll just say it's a pleasure to have you guys back up here to serve. We look forward to the next four years of friendship fighting, but all for the right reasons moving forward for the, for our community. So unless someone else would like to say anything else, we'll go ahead and stand in recess until six thirty.
Joe Burton.
All right, Council, we will go ahead and come on back from recess and we will continue with item two on our agenda, which is the public hearing continued from December seventh, twenty twenty one for around Village Expansion H twenty twenty one dash zero zero two seven. Is Alan with us? Bill, are you making any comments on this one?
Mayor, members of the council, I'll go ahead and step in for Alan. He's going to handle Apex East tonight and I'll do the, the one after this. But essentially applicants requested another continuance in looking to be, be be before this body and sometime mid-March. So staff's recommending that the council continue this item to March eighth.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? Mr. Quark, do we have anyone that came to sign up to write testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not have a signup sheet out, but I don't believe anyone here is for that item.
Okay, if there's anybody in the room or anybody online that was here for this item, either come forward or raise your hand if you'd like to provide any comments. Seeing no one, do I have a motion? Councilmember.
Move, Mr. Mayor, move that we continue this applicant, this item H dash two zero two one dash zero zero two seven to March twenty second, two thousand twenty two.
Back in the motion.
I have a motion, a second to continue this public hearing until March twenty second, twenty twenty two is our discussion. If not, I'll favor second by saying aye. Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the item is continued. Next item up is a public hearing continued from December twenty first, twenty twenty one for UDC text amendment regarding Z O A twenty twenty one dash zero 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 three. We will continue this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, happy new year. Worst time to be in front of you this year. So next item on the agenda is a UDC text amendment. Usually you see staff come before you as a city initiate, initiated one. But this, in this particular case, staff has been working with the applicant. A few months ago, they brought forward an application before this body that, that's been approved. We realized with some of the design that was proposed with that development, that we had some conflicts in city code that would not mesh with the design that they were proposing. And rather than go through alternative compliance and try to find a, a remedy, it seemed cleaner to come forward with a text amendment. We did offer up to the applicant that we would, we would be willing to wait until a, a second round or at least the first up UDC changes for the year. And they're like, no, they were, they wanted to get it going sooner rather than later. So they agreed to pay the application fee and bring this one forward to you. So tonight we'll be discussing really two code changes. One impacts our dimensional standards in our R four through our R forty districts. And then also how we assess landscape buffers and along collector streets. So the graphic that I have before you this evening talks about the change. It's not really changing the setbacks of our zoning districts. It's more of clarifying how to interpret the setbacks as when you have homes that take access from an alley or where the homes primarily, the front doors oriented towards a collector street. It would not have any impact on whether or not the garage took access from the collector, if you had garage facing the, the collector streets merely when you have access from a lesser classified street or an alleyway is really where the clarification comes in. Currently, what we're trying to do as well is align this with our traditional neighborhood districts. So our traditional neighborhood districts are T and R zone and T and C zones, and they have specific design criteria for streets that, that front on alleys. And then rather than applying those standards, we felt it was easier to clarify a note in the code. And so this graphic that I have before you is, is meant to apply to all the residential districts. But really it's just adding that note that you see at the bottom of the page and it's really meant to clarify. So typically the way the code reads is whenever we have collector streets as part of development, the code requires a common lot to be, the landscape buffer along that street to be platted as a common lot. And typically you don't have access to the common lot because you're taking access from a local street that's parallel and that, that common lot or that collector street. And what's that, what's that, that's, that issue has created not only issue for the city, for the applicant, but it's also created an issue with ACHD's policies because now they no longer have street frontage. So ACHD won't recognize an alleyway as an alley anymore. It becomes a, what they call a minor local. It becomes a local street essentially. And so what we're trying to do is one, address the conflict in code and two, address some of the conflicts with ACHD's policy with this code change. So this simply says right here, and I'll, I have a third slide here that will kind of show. It's an illustration of how all this is working and what we'll actually get at the end of the day if this does go into effect. So essentially what the applicant's proposing is rather than requiring a common lot being platted, we're going to allow a landscape easement. We've done that in the past. So what I typically, what we've done to allow a, to get an applicant out of the requirement of the common lot is we've required them to go through the alternative compliance process. And again, as I mentioned to you in my opening statements, rather than processing multiple alternative compliance requests, we felt it just easier to clarify in the code when this rule would apply. And that's really what this note does. The second part of the change that I alluded to was who's to own and maintain that landscape buffer. We do have that addressed in code. The change that's before you is, it's slightly modified because it was modified by the commission during the hearing. And so essentially what we're doing is eliminating a portion of the text and adding some new text. So essentially we would allow this, if that situation exists as described in note one before. If that situation exists, then the applicant would, would be allowed to, or the director would have the ability to allow that easement and allow, allow the streets, the landscape buffer to be an easement. And then it would be noted that it'd be owned and maintained by either the homeowner, the HOA, depending on how they structure their CC and ours, or again, the Business Association, which is typically a commercial development in this particular case. So in short, the applicant did provide a graphic that you can see here and it kind of describes what would happen. So essentially the code has setbacks for residential from the collector street, which you saw that, which is twenty feet to living area. Well, essentially with what we're proposing with the code change this evening, essentially what you're going to get is an eight foot detached or a foot planter strip with or a foot planner strip with the tree line streets, you're going to get a five foot detached sidewalk. And our code requires setbacks to be measured from the back of sidewalk. So in this particular case, an applicant, we would require that the minimum setback at ten feet from the back of sidewalk for a total overall landscape buffer setback from the street at twenty three feet versus twenty feet now that we get if you had a typical common lot. So again, in working with the applicant, we were comfortable with the language that they were proposing. Planning and zoning commission did recommend support of this application. Did, they did not, we did not have any public testimony on it. The applicant's in agreement with the stated changes that I showed you this evening. Again, we are recommending and supportive of the changes as well. And I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and stand for any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Bill, can you, can you go over with us? So I had, had shot off an email to you and, and wanted you to talk with us about this. If the twenty feet in the rear is not required, could, could this potentially mean that, that those lots will be even smaller? So if I understand right, the alley, the alleyways, there's only a requirement of five feet, depending on which district it's in, which zone it's in. So like R fifteen, it could have a five foot setback for the, from the, from the structure to the alley, correct? So where the applicant is, is twenty, twenty feet is what is in their proposal. But we're talking about changing this for every application as a code change. So what happens if an, if an application comes before us that has much shorter than twenty feet in the rear?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, thank you. You did provide some emails to me this afternoon. So this particular, it's going to depend on the code. I'm sorry, not the code, the, the specific zoning district that these developments will occur in. You are correct, certain zones, this, this particular graphic that I have up here does not allow for a five foot setback in the R two district for an alley loaded. Typically, you're not going to see an alley load in an R two zone. You're going to see that in an R eight or R fifteen zone. And so a few years ago, we did modify the setback to allow a five foot setback when you had from the alley. What we did is we added a separate note that's not on this graphic. But in that specific note, it says you either provided along the side of the garage to make up for that additional parking on site. Or the director has the ability to provide, allow the applicant to provide shared parking elsewhere throughout the development. And that's why typically when you've seen developments that have come before you with alley loaded, you'll see separate parking nodes throughout the development, trying to make up for some of those parking pads because they're allowed to take advantage of that. So again, you'd, you'd see that typically more in our forty or fifteen zone, R eight potentially. But in your R two, our four zones, you're not going to see that. So we have addressed that in code. Yes, you could have homes that do not have a parking pad. But keep in mind that two bedroom units only require one, one, one garage and one parking pad. So if they had a two car garage and it was only a two bedroom unit, a two car garage would meet code. You wouldn't need not, you would not need a parking pad. It would only be, be more impactful to those three and four bedroom homes. And as you, if you recall, most of the developers come forward and saying, because we don't have street fronting garages, you actually get more on street parking because you get, excuse me, you get the entire street frontage to park on rather than having curb cuts along the road blocking, taking up additional parking. So those were some of the changes that happened previous to this. So we're not, again, we're not changing any setbacks to the code. This is really just to clarify that when you have alley load on a collector road, we have the ability to allow an easement rather than the common lot and that the applicant would have the ability to have a minimum ten foot setback measure from the back of sidewalk for over, for a minimum setback of twenty three feet from the street. And A C H D has specific standards too, to allow on street parking too. That's, we also want to see some on street parking in front of that. So it's creating more of that, what we call a traditional neighborhood design. You're more downtown feel, shorter block links, and then parallel parking in front of the units outside of the travel lanes. Applicant has some of that in their slideshow that they'll present to you as well.
Counsel, any additional questions? All right. I see applicant, applicants come forward and say the name and address, be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council member Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation, twenty nine, twenty nine West Explorer Drive in Meridian. And I appreciate the very perceptive question and I will get to that in my presentation. Because I think it's important that you see how this really applies. This discussion that we've had with staff actually goes back about six months or maybe even more because we found a few contradictions and inconsistencies that, that Bill has noted, including one of A C H D that really puts a damper on some of the design techniques that the city would allow under your code. But if you have that, a common lot on that frontage, you know, you can't use a public, well, it can't be a public alley. It has to be a street at the back. And so it's kind of an interesting challenge to work through all of these issues. And so we came up with, and while it applies to a specific issue that we found in one of our projects, Pinnacle, which is being platted as Apex, it actually will apply across the city and really only in the case where it's more of a traditional neighborhood feel. The slide in front of, before you right now simply shows the, the two locations that we are challenged with in this particular case. We have a collector, a residential collector street coming into the project. In the first phase, we have some alley loaded lots on the east side of Apex Avenue. And in our phase that's coming forward soon, we will have some rear loaded lots that will have access from a local street or a common drive. In this particular case, the note addresses either of those circumstances. But in all cases, the easement for landscape purposes is maintained along the street frontage to give you the character that is desired in this type of development. Not getting, Mr. Bill, I'm not getting any. If you can release that to me, I can, okay. What we found as we were looking through the challenges again, associated with A C H D, they have two graphics in their livable street design guide. The first one that I'm going to show you is actually for front loaded housing on a residential collector. But I wanted to use this slide to illustrate the fact that what we're proposing in Pinnacle is again, the detached sidewalk, the five foot detached sidewalk, the eight foot planter strip, on street parking, bike lanes and two travel lanes. So that's the character. The next slide actually shows, Bill, I'm afraid that you're going to have to scroll these for me for whatever reason. It's not advancing. The next slide shows an alley loaded or rear loaded product. But with, in this particular case, it does not have the bike lanes that will be provided or have already been constructed in the project. So we're using A C H D's livable street design guide in the process and fully approved. The next slide goes to the, the point that Bill was talking about that council member Pearl brought up. Your code requires parking for, depending on the type of housing that it is. So we, in our particular case, we have to have, since these are narrower lots and an alley loaded or even the, the street rear loaded lots. We have to have the twenty foot parking strip behind. I don't know of any case where you could do it, as Bill has noted, without having that type of requirement unless you put them to the side of the house, but it's required under your code. So I think that particular issue is addressed. And the green, of course, is the required twenty foot landscape buffer, the ten foot setback is noted in red. Bill, I want you to go on past the, the next slide, which is simply the same one you put in, in this particular one. When we were at the planning and zoning commission, well, there were two options that we discussed with staff and originally in our application included. The first one to simply modify section, the one at the top. And we all concluded that that didn't add a lot of clarity. So we looked at the second option, which was to, to delete that particular section and then modify to, well, two B would become two A. And that would be where the landscape buffer would be required, either in an easement and then maintained by the property owner. And in this particular slide, you can see the insert there in the red with the, the arrow. The planning commission said, okay, property owner or homeowners association or the business owners association, in the case of a, of a commercial project. We agree that that was certainly a needed clarification. So obviously we do encourage the city to adopt this, but I want to show you the, the reality of, of where this exists in a project that Brighton has done before. So Bill, I want you to, to go forward. There you go. Let's start with that one. In our, the mill district at Harris Ranch that we actually started in nineteen ninety nine, seems like a long time ago. And in this particular case, all of the product out there has a rear parking pad on all of those homes. We actually traveled the, the country, David Turnbull and I did, and found circumstances where the alley loaded product had to have that, or it really created a problem for the residents as well as any other services that might be using those alleys. But it's the street character that the next slide shows of what we achieved. And in this particular case, this is looking to the west toward Eckert Road. And this is a, of course, a project done more than twenty years ago. And so the minimum separation in these particular cases is eighty two feet. But that was in a four foot sidewalk with a five foot planter strip and no required on street parking or bike lanes. So in reality, it's a little bit tighter, but you can see that it's also very livable. The next slide is simply the same location looking to the east. And again, a narrower sidewalk, narrower parking, planter strip. And it does have on street parking allowed on these twenty nine foot wide streets, interestingly enough. But it's still, in that particular case, has a minimum separation of seventy feet. Now, at the risk of being a little bit flippant, the last slide kind of shows the reality of what we're talking about. The Boeing seven thirty seven max wingspan is exactly what your current code requires. We could land carefully a seven thirty seven on one of these streets and not touch the fronts of those houses if, if the pilot was really good. In this particular case, the UDC setback amendment that we're talking about reduces it to a minimum of ninety three feet, which is still frankly excessive, but it does create a very livable street situation with the friction, I'll call it, of on street parking and the bike lanes. But the planter strips with the, the tree canopies over the sidewalks and then the homes facing those streets, again, in a very livable, functional circumstance. Mr. Mayor and council members, I would answer your questions, but would certainly ask that you agree with the two proposed amendments to the UDC.
Thank you, Mr. Wardle. Counsel, any questions for the applicants?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll go with Councilman Barton.
My quick question, who's the, who's the grantee of the east?
The easement is granted by the plat itself. It's required actually to be noted on the plat and it certainly would be noted also in the C C and ours. So the easement is, it's what your code requires on any collector roadway. The question is whether it's a common lot or an easement. It's the same landscape buffer requirement that your code requires currently.
Councilman.
Follow up. So the common lot, I get separate platted lot, HOA maintains it. Easy to see how you can ensure compliance, but it's in an easement. Owner's obligation to maintain, maybe I misunderstood, but what's to prevent an owner from failing to maintain?
That would be an HOA enforcement issue, would not fall to the city. But it's also the same circumstance of any home that you have in your community right now. The homeowner, even if there was an easement, is responsible to maintain the landscaping as well as even the sidewalk. You know, we have to keep them shoveled of snow and so forth. So if, if it was in a common lot, you can imagine, I think you alluded to it a little bit, the challenges of one homeowner kind of doing, wanting to do something unique in their part of that common lot versus somebody that didn't really care. And so we're, we simply don't want to deal with a common lot when you have the homes facing the street the way we do in this particular slide.
Counsel, I'm Barton.
Maybe I saw it wrong. I thought that risk might be greater if it's placed in an easement. Private property, the owner owns the land, subject to an easement. So the owner might be more reluctant to maintain it and keep it pretty. Less, less so than a common lot that the HOA maintains the entire parcel.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Barton, I understand your question and maybe staff can bail me out a little bit if I'm not articulate. But the easement is simply of the city's requirement to assure that there is a minimum amount of landscape along a collector or a, an arterial or whatever the case may be. So we've done this in almost every project that's on either a collector or an arterial roadway. It's always typically been in an easement and certainly all in the commercial areas. And the only times that we've done it in a common lot is when the, the lots back up to the street and you have the fence and everything is out and it's beautifully maintained by the association. In this case, we have the front of the homes at the street enjoying the civility of neighbors walking on the sidewalks and so forth. So I don't anticipate that to really be an issue because there's a certain sense of, I guess, pride in the way your home looks. Now we may find maybe a case where the HOA has to go after somebody and say, you're not maintaining your part of that particular easement. But the easement is more of a setback for the purpose of maintaining an area that has to be landscaped. Now, if Bill needs to help clarify anything that I've said, I would appreciate it.
Counsel, Mr. Strater.
Thank you, Mr. Wardle. I, I do really like the pedestrian safety aspect of being able to have kids and people walking on the sidewalk without worrying about somebody backing up in their driveway. This example in Harris Ranch, so if it's saying the minimum separation, maybe I just missed this with seventy feet. So as a comparison, from building to building, is that distance then seventy feet in total in this example?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, yes, that's, this is the real life circumstance of this particular case. And the actual frontages here are less than the ten feet that would be required from the, your code right now. So interestingly enough, let me just deviate. If, if we had applied for traditional neighborhood residential, we would be talking eight feet. So we're just, it's, it's close to what your T N R, but rather than have just a very small piece of traditional neighborhood area, we wanted to have, you know, the consistency of the R fifteen zone that all of this is in currently.
Thank you. So yeah, that was going to be my next question. I was just curious what the distance was from the actual edge of the building to the sidewalk in your example. So you're saying it's actually less than ten feet?
Yes, we, we actually could go, could go down and there probably are many cases of five feet from back of sidewalk. This was twenty years ago in a very unique project with its own set of standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cameron.
Mr. Wardle, I've been reading a little bit that kind of in the rise of COVID, you've seen, for whatever reason, homeowners associations leaning towards dissolution. And it's not something that we've seen a lot here, although in the past three months, I've got a call from a resident who was inquiring about what it would take to do that. So while rare. What happens in this case if an HOA dissolves and they've gone these kind of little pieces that are common lots? But don't really have a marketable purpose. And how does, how does a, how does a neighborhood respond in that type of a situation where the HOA doesn't exist anymore? They likely would have to auction this off and it's maybe a bidding war between neighbors on if they're gonna.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, this doesn't apply in this case because the owner, his lot goes out to the sidewalk. All the easement does is require that a certain area be reserved for landscape. In this case, twenty feet from the back of curb. So there is no, even if an HOA was dissolved, it would only take away the enforcement aspect of it to maintain. But that's the case in almost every subdivision now. And quite frankly, I have never encountered that in all of the projects that I've done over the last decades.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Mike. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
The reason I ask that question is because we, we are increasingly seeing neighborhoods where twenty-foot parking pad is, is, actually has a garage. So you really only have five feet of concrete from the alley to the garage door. And it's creating a lot of issues with trash day. It's creating a lot of issues with people trying to store things, cars getting in and out. And really just a very short distance between the, the, the homes, the garages. So what happens when we now shorten the front by ten feet? And then there would possibly be an alley that has a five-foot setback. Parking pad is, is, you know, inside of the garage. So now we have a lot that really has very minimal space in the front, very minimal space in the back. I just, I anticipate it creating more challenges, even with additional parking that may be added into a neighborhood that would be required as, as Bill had stated. You're not anticipating doing that here in this project, but it is something that we see happen in the city. So we have to think about that as a possibility of the code changes. As a developer, what are your thoughts on that?
I had a motto in some of my PR materials dating back some twenty-eight years when I first started working with David Turnbull. Called in pursuit of community. I was raised in the old north end of Boise. And I was always looking for the opportunity to create that kind of an environment. And so when working with Mr. Turnbull and Brighton back in the late nineties, we started putting together Harris Ranch. That's why we specifically took a number of trips to see how we could create that kind of an environment. Now, if you look at, I don't, I don't understand maybe the concern of that, that frontage situation. Because we've done it in a lot of our projects already. Now, some of them are the age qualified. But if you look into our Paramount project where we have the alley loaded product, which has the twenty-foot pad at the back. It's still ten feet at the front. And so we're, we're not, the only reason that this came up is the collector, the residential collector street. And that requirement for that twenty-foot landscape buffer. So we've done it in Paramount. We've, we're doing it in all of our age qualified products where in those cases, they are the five or six foot at the back. And then, you know, ten feet at the front. So I guess I'm not seeing any issues with the, my own experience and the products that we've provided into the community already.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So your, your associations, I'm assuming that you have got approval through alternative compliance in those situations. So in your experience, there haven't been issues with very narrow alleyways. And then, so my, my thought and the reason I'm asking this question is. This will allow lots to become really short, more short than they, than I've seen them be before. And it's going to allow for, obviously, if you're in a particular zone, your density has to be at a minimum or a maximum. But I feel like it's going to allow for another opportunity for us to try to create more dense communities. And sort of be at that higher end of the R fifteen, rather than the lower end of the R fifteen, R fifteen, let's say. As an opportunity for a developer and how the designs are done in the communities. And I just, I, I have concern that it's really going to make the homes feel much closer together. Than they are intended to be in a particular zone.
Your code, right now, the only circumstance that I am aware of where you have that reduced alley and the reduced frontage is an age qualified. And I'm not sure that the code allows that anymore. But the, only the age qualified that would give you the flexibility of having less than the parking pad out the back. If it's standard, single-family in a standard zone without that kind of a caveat or qualifier. You have to have that parking outside the structure. So I'm not sure that it will, I'm not sure that it will come up or that it will become a problem that have, that cannot be addressed through the application of the code. And in effect at the time. I just wanted to make sure that. The caveat that we have in the note modification is that it's granted only in the case of a collector street with on-street parking. And garage access from an alley. And the assumption is that you're meeting the parking requirements per code. If the required twenty-foot landscape buffer from the back of curb is provided and the dwelling setback is not less than ten feet from the back of sidewalk. Again, I think the best example, and I didn't even think to put it in the slides, would be what we did in Paramount. Twenty feet at the back, ten-foot minimum at the front, and you don't detect any sense of, of confinement. And in that particular case, we didn't have the streets that had the on-street parking with the bike lanes. Narrower streets, in fact, than what this particular case. These are a seventy-seven-foot street with all of the improvements that are required under ACHD's residential collector standard, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So the assumption in the age restricted communities is that there will be fewer vehicles at each property, right? Which is why it has a different set of standards.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's correct, but has there been a change, Bill, in the code from that standard? Or has it always been, have we, my, I think you are correct that we've done some alternative compliance. But in those cases, we also provided. Parking stalls strategically located for the, the overflow or guest parking. But maybe Bill can clarify the code standard right now for any age qualified.
Absolutely, Mike. Thanks. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, we took that requirement. It's something that we've talked about with the focus group, the last several meetings that we've had with them, the last couple of UDC updates. Parking is a hot topic in our community, as you know. And we felt it would be best approached, so we took out age restricted parking from our code and allowed. And we would analyze that on a case-by-case basis through what Mike was saying, alternative compliance. In, in the case of what the applicants referring to as far as their cadence product and even their Hill Century Farms project is they went through a PUD process. And they asked for a reduction, you know, they asked for dimensional standards to reduce some of their setbacks and some of their parking standards. But they did so in, by allowing private streets, allowing parking on one side, as I mentioned in my presentation. This affords you more parking on street. But they also provided parking throughout the development to address where they were deficient in order to address some of those concerns with their parking. So yes, can someone do that? I, I looked at the parking standards. It does say the director, as determined by the director, they have to provide equivalent parking and that setback has to be at the five-foot mark. And the reason why we set the five-foot mark a few years ago when we modified the code is because we didn't want people parking in the alley. We felt like if we created a wider parking pad than five feet, then you'd have people parallel parking in the alley. Blocking access for garbage trucks and the fire trucks if there was an emergency there. And so we were very mindful that we set it at five feet, so we would, we would try to discourage that activity. So just quickly wrap up my comments here. One, we don't address rate, age restricted parking anymore. It's what the code is today. We do that through this process, through the public hearing process. You explain it in your narrative and then as we present to commission and the council. We explain to you that it's intended to be age restricted and this is the parking that they're providing. And you guys are, I know this body is again, asking for more and more parking counts as, as developments come before you. So that's how we've agreed to address that. I am getting ready to kick off the next round of UDC focus group meeting, so I'm happy to take back any, some feedback if you want me to at least have us address this comment. We are, we will be discussing multifamily parking. It's something that you wanted us to look at once again, and then also happy to bring up this topic if you, if you'd like me to.
Mr. Mayor, I want to just conclude and just, I think we all missed one important word. The only place this would apply is on a collector roadway, not the local streets. So it's very narrow and you won't see a lot of it. But where there is a residential collector street and you want to have that character rather than fences. As we have done in some of our other projects, then it affords that opportunity. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm just following on Councilman Pearl's comments and I just want to make sure I'm fully wrapping my head. I, I think this makes sense in the front of the homes. I don't have an issue there. I think that the question, I guess, that's still lingering in my mind is how many situations under current code? We would end up with that five-foot minimum in the back? And I'm wondering if we need a catch-all minimum that is higher than five feet for the back piece? Was that only applying to age restricted or are there other categories on an alley loaded? That this could be a shorter distance in the back?
Well, I think Mike's done a great job of, of doing what we want. He's, he's actually expanded them on it because he said, he said common drive, he said local street access and he's, he said alley access. This particular section of code only speaks to alley access where you could take advantage of the five-foot setback. That's the only exception in code at this point. So I think from, from staff's perspective, we feel comfortable with what they proposed and what they're trying to do. Because we, we're scratching our heads with them saying, we don't want to create conflicts. We hear time and time again, we don't want conflicts with other agencies, so we need to adjust our code to adjust. So in my mind, if we want to create these types of developments and have these livable communities, as Mike alluded to, we have to have some flexibility in code to do that. Going back to Councilman Borton's comments, as HOA, it's, it's like anything, right? You're the property owner, it's an easement. How they define that in the CCNR is some HOAs have all of their landscape maintained by the HOA. So that's something that a developer would have the ability to do, that all this area is maintained under one common ownership and you're covered. Two, it's, again, it's a collector road. Code requires a street buffer along collector roads, whether it's in the easement or a common lot. So the homeowner, the property owner or the HOA is going to have to make, and we approve landscape plans to show that it's in compliance with the code. So we still have some enforceability here if someone's not maintaining it. Because one, it's an easement and two, it's a collector street, which requires a certain amount of trees along that street buffer. So I don't want to lose sight of that either. So we, we, I think we have it covered. I, we don't get a lot of alley loaded product. The last couple ones that we work on, again, have been through that PUD process. Because time and time again, as we take these developments before the commission and this body. You've, you've always wanted more parking. You always want four parking stalls per unit. And sometimes our development community is like, why does the council and commission want so much parking for the community? We can't get transit or, you know, we got to be able to do something, get density, do this, keep things affordable. If you keep requiring us to pave everything and do all this, we just can't get to that point. So again, I'm not trying to beat the drum here, but parking isn't, is a hot topic. Again, I, I'm trying to think in, in top of my head, how many developments we've had someone take advantage of this. And I think of the ones that I've worked on, most of them have been done through the PUD process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not taking issue actually with the recommendation in terms of the. Setback from the sidewalk in the front of the homes. I guess my question is, should be separately be considering a requirement for the back specifically for a minimum setback from the alley? That, and so I guess would, would you envision that we would contemplate that under the next round of UDC changes separately from this? Or, you know, are there a lot of circumstances where that would actually happen or not?
Well, let me clarify, the setback for the structure and the, and the setback for a parking pad are two different things. The parking pad is not a setback, the setback, the five-foot setback is to the garage. A parking pad is just a dimensional standard to provide the required parking stall dimension. So again, there's, am I looking at the code here? And let me go through the, our districts here real quick and I'll let you know how many of those. So our traditional neighborhood districts like our TNR, TNC, they do have the five-foot rear setback. Again, we're trying to get people, we were, the reason why we reduced that a few years back is we were trying to get people, incentivize people to do more of that. Because we don't have a lot of that in our community. And trying to get more of a variety in our developments rather than your typical front-load garage-dominated suburban developments. We're trying to get more of that pedestrian-oriented, traditional neighborhood feel. So that's why we tried to reduce those standards a little bit to try to drive some innovative design, I guess, is the, is the best way to, to put it. And we just didn't, it hasn't taken off yet for whatever reason. But I think as of late, I think this applicant's proven that it can be done and people are still in the market for that. But some of our other developers say there's absolutely no market for alley loaded. And why it doesn't work for one and, and it works for the other, I'm not sure. I don't get in the business of crunching numbers on whether development works or not. But certainly, I think the R fifteen zone, let me pull up that code real quick, quick, and then I'll circle back with you.
Mr. Mayor, I intended to take five minutes tonight. I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Court, can we have anyone to send up, provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no, we did not.
Okay, do we have anybody in the room that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Anybody online that would like to provide testimony on this item?
We do have somebody online.
Well, we do have somebody online who is raising their hand to provide testimony.
Logged in as Jay Edwards and you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Julie Edwards and I live at thirteen-ten East Mary Lane. I was just wondering, was it possible to pull back up the PowerPoint slide of Apex West? I just wanted to bring up an example on there to see if that would apply to this because I'm a little confused about the, the rear loaded lot. Yeah, that one right there. So the, in the colors, color portion of it. So you're talking about the residential collector. And so on either side of that road are alley loaded lots. So I'm guessing that people are driving in to park in their driveways from this residential collector. So if you just have five feet on either side until you reach the garage. This is, from what I believe, I think this is kind of a through street to other parts of that subdivision. So you're going to have higher amounts of traffic. And then you're backing out of your garage with five feet until you hit the road? Is that, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly? So I just don't think that alley, alley loaded in this situation on a residential collector. If it's an alley load on a true alley, that makes sense. But an alley load on a collector, to me, does not make sense. And that actually seems like more troublesome for accidents and things like that. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, but I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
Mr. Parsons, would you like to provide correction on that comment?
Yeah, so, so Julie, the graphic that you're looking at, essentially the homes, the, the homes will not have access to this collector road. They would have to physically turn and access to the alley and enter from the alleyway. So there, there wouldn't be any conflicts there. This graphic's a little misleading. So the topics that we're talking about tonight is where you'd have the fronts of the homes, the porches oriented towards the collector road with access. with access coming from the back of the lot, not the front of the lot. And that actually makes for a safer situation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then circling back to, to your point, Councilwoman Schrader, it looks like the R eight, R fifteen and R forty zone allows for that five foot reduction when you have alley loaded homes. So there's three zones that allow that reduction. And sorry, including the T and R zones, so I guess there's four. But again, this is the goal, is to try to align some of these up with, with those districts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
So Bill, in this example, the purple lots, alley loaded lots, um, there would be twenty foot parking pad in the back and either on that parking pad, there'll be a garage or there won't be a garage. And if there is a garage, then there will be five feet from the garage to this alley. Correct, five feet of driveway essentially. If there isn't a, a garage, it would be a twenty foot pad of some kind.
Not necessarily. So mayor, members of the council, so at a minimum, the code, so parking spaces for residential districts are based on bedroom counts. So a one or two bedroom home requires one garage space and one parking pad. You have to have a garage and, or two and three, four, two, three, four bedroom home. You need a minimum two car garage and two parking pads, so four spaces in total. So in the situation that you described, if the applicant was, or somebody was to propose a three, four bedroom home, they would need a two car garage and the twenty by twenty parking pad in order to meet code. Unless they had an approval that didn't require that. If it was a two bedroom unit, a one or two bedroom unit, which we don't get one bedroom units, but if it's a two bedroom units with an office, technically, yes, you would still have a two car garage or it could be a one car garage with a ten by twenty parking pad. It just depends on how the applicant designs the, the, the structure. But typically you would get a two car garage and then a five foot parking pad, which is not a parking pad. It's just a five foot setback from the alley. As a driveway approach at that point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I work so much better with visuals. Would you indulge me in pulling up a specific street in Meridian as an overhead example of what I'm, have concerns about?
Sure.
The street is.
Give me a second here.
Yeah, you bet.
Just so we're clear, do you know where a place to look is? Are you, okay, just didn't know if it's gonna be a, not in search or?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Borden.
What do you call a deer with no eyes? No idea.
No idea.
Need more time?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to pull up Google Maps for you here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
You're reluctant to call on me. What do you call a deer with no eyes and no legs? Still no idea. Better find it quick.
All right, Bill, looks like you're down a street.
So if you can see my pointer here, this is a pretty similar situation. This is exactly, although this isn't a collector road, you can see here in this particular case, there's no parking pad. The home's front on the main street that comes out of the subdivision. And there's an alley there behind it. Again, this was approved through a PUD.
Would the applicant like to come forward for any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, switching Wardles here, John Wardle, twenty nine, twenty nine, West Navigator, Meridian, oh, eight, three, six, four, two. Um, can I have the screen just for a second? Let me just raise my hand here. I just, I just wanted to put on the record that there, there are two standards for the setback as we're talking about alleys. Yes, there is a setback which uh Bill has indicated is five feet. But in most of the cases in the projects that we have been doing alleys, these are homes where you have uh three or four um bedrooms. Here, here's a case in Paramount. Um, this is Cagney here. This is just south of um the Paramount Elementary School. We have a number of roads, let me just zoom out here, that all go out to, you know, arterials and collectors. But I'm just talking about this area here. Um, in this particular area, we have a ten foot setback from sidewalk. And on the alleys, we actually have a twenty foot setback from face of garage to edge of alley. Um, the requirement, again, like I said, there's two requirements. Um, one is the setback requirement, but then there's also the parking pad requirement. Um, in this case, these homes have three car, three bedrooms or more, meaning they need to have a minimum of two car garage and they need to provide that two car parking, which is the parking apron that's here. Um, in the example that Bill just provided a second ago, um, it is of note that that project is Heritage Garden or Heritage Commons. Um, that is an age qualified community. Um, and so I think at the time that one came through, there were some consideration. I wasn't here when it was done, but that is an age qualified fifty five plus. Um, in these communities that I'm showing you right here at Paramount, um, this one in particular is, is not restricted. And, and these homes were built with three bedrooms or more. Um, we've been looking at this. Uh, we know the reality of what needs to happen. Um, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, council members regarding that setback in the alley. But we were, we've been very particular about a twenty foot setback in the rear of these homes, which are not restricted by age. Um, again, the, the specific application for this request is on collector roadways. What we've typically done in the city of Meridian on collector roadways, we've turned our back to them. We haven't embraced them. We have some really nice landscaping, but we have landscaping and we have a fence. And there's very few openings where people can actually look at on the collector. In the project that we're talking about here, this is a residential collector. It happens to show up on the ACHD's plan as a residential collector. We didn't want to turn our back on it. In fact, originally across the street, that's what it was going to be. It was going to be a common lot. Um, the rear of the homes, no, no interaction. But in this particular case, we have an opportunity to have front porches, have the automobile access to the rear on this collector street and make them very livable. Um, the common or the, the easement is within the lots. It, it's every lot in the city of Meridian has an easement on it. Um, these homeowners will, will take the initiative um to maintain it. I mean, I, I can tell you that um we have a great tool out there. If it's not the HOA, then it's next door. Um, we have a very good opportunity to shame our neighbors for not doing certain things, um, right, wrong or indifferent. But it's been our experience on the communities that we have managed and we manage these throughout. And we're very clear that that landscaping would be the responsibility of that homeowner in this application when we bring that front porch to the street. We do appreciate staff working on this with us. Um, this is not, while we did make application for it and we do have a, a specific project where this applies, this isn't just self-serving. There, there is a definite conflict in the code as ACHD interprets alleyways and the setback from collectors, and we just felt like this created a more livable opportunity. Um, and so we just simply asked for your, your approval of this UDC amendment in front of you that would allow for this easement to occur when homes are alley loaded on a collector roadway. Sam, for any questions you might have for us.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mayor, members of the council, I, I want to go back to some early discussions too. You said, is there a way to, to make sure we're, we're, we have it covered? Because you're right, every, not every developer's alike. And uh, but certainly if you look at that, the, the proposed language, we could make it clarifying that they would get the exception if they also provided the twenty by twenty parking pad in that note and make it clear. Or we could also add that, that graphic into the code as what the intent of that note means. And then you could see through that graphic that there's a twenty by twenty parking pad. And that was the intent of it, is that you would, you could take advantage of the easement. You could take advantage of the ten foot setback. If you do these things, you provide twenty by twenty parking pad. It's alley loaded, it meets the criteria and as per the graphic or whatever we can attach in the code. So I, I, you could do that as well if, if that's your pleasure tonight. I don't think the applicant would have any heartburn with it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I myself would be a lot more comfortable with that. I realize that is not part of this application. But I feel like that if we approve this, there could be consequences with, with the rear setbacks. And now all of a sudden, what would have been a seventy foot lot or a sixty foot lot now becomes a fifty foot because we approved this and we're, and we're not discussing what's happening on the, on the alley side. So uh, yes, I, I would like there to be a minimum requirement of twenty foot parking pad. Um, and, and because I don't think, I don't feel personally like that's clear. And in the sections of code that cover R fifteen, R forty, where it says there's a five foot alley setback, I don't, I think it appears that, now you're saying that there's parking standards that aren't mentioned in here and there are. But if you have a one or two bedroom um townhome, which, you know, we've just discussed this evening, the three bedrooms, which would require that the, the two car garage plus the twenty foot parking pad. But if we have a, if we have a two bedroom home, that requirement doesn't exist. Is that what I'm understanding? Yeah. So either we need to specify if it's, you know, less than three bedrooms, that this is what needs to happen or we need to just say there has to be a twenty foot parking pad. I, I don't, I'm not comfortable approving this unless we address that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
That sounds great to me. I don't know if we need to take additional public testimony for kind of getting to that point, but um, I, I think it's a good suggestion that makes up for some unforeseen circumstances where we could end up with density that wasn't originally contemplated. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Unless Councilwoman Pro would like to, I would be happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
Okay. Um, so I would move that we approve. Oh, I move we close public hearing.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, I'm favoring seeing that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, I move that we go ahead and approve file number ZOA twenty twenty one dash zero zero three as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with the modification that to take advantage of this um exception, we will require a twenty by twenty foot parking pad in the alley loaded area. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Um, would the motion maker also like to add that this illustration be added into uh the new code?
Absolutely. Couldn't hurt. Second agrees.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, the motion, there's, yes.
Councilman Hoagland here and Bill Parsons, um, do we need to make sure that the commission verbiage for homeowners associations added? Or is that covered in the, in the, in the language?
Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, it's covered.
Is there further discussion on this item? If not, I'm favoring seeing that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Yeah, I just have it and the item is agreed to. Maybe the best thing that happened to a seven thirty seven Max in a long time. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Apex E subdivision H twenty twenty one dash zero zero A six. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. Member.
Before we start this, unfortunately, I'll be, I'll need to recuse myself from this conversation for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations, our newly elected council people. The, we were all kind of cheering from you out there in the background. It's kind of hard to keep a dry eye. Um, all right. So this is a resoning preliminary plat and development agreement modification. Property was annexed and zoned R four as part of the South Meridian Annexation. It consisted, this South Meridian Annexation consisted of thirteen hundred twenty two acres. There were numerous development agreements associated with this annexation. Each development agreement was specific to the property being annexed. This property is governed by the, I always say, on Murgoyo Development Agreement. The DA allows agricultural operations to continue until the property is developed. And at that time, the property, when it, when it was annexed, the city anticipated that there would be a rezon and plating for this property. Prior to any development, the DA requires that a development plan be approved through a DA mod. So they can't build anything on this property without doing a DA mod. Comprehensive plan recognizes property for medium density residential, which is three to eight dwellings per acre. The applicant requests to rezone thirty two acres of land from R four to the R eight zone district and a development agreement mod to create, uh, to do this development, uh, to allow a proposed preliminary plat consisting of ninety five residential lots and fourteen common lots. Please note that the number of lots has been reduced. It was ninety seven, now it's ninety five. I'll talk to, about that at the end of the presentation. Uh, R eight zone district requires a minimum lot size of four thousand square feet and a minimum street frontage of forty feet. Uh, preliminary plat data shows that it, it has a minimum lot size of sixty nine hundred square feet and an average lot size of eighty four hundred square feet. These are sizes which are smaller than the keep subdivision to the east, which is here. Um, but it is larger than the impressive east ridge in most of the lots in Lavender Heights subdivision across east, east Lake Hazel Road to the north. Lot sizes are well within the, the former designation of the LCR, which I sent, again, I said is three to eight dwelling units. Uh, the plat proposes two points of access uh from a new collector road. The new collector road is called Recreation Avenue, which is what you see here. Over here to the west is New Discovery Park. Uh, the, let's see, the primary access will occur at approximately the middle of the property, which is what you see right about here. Uh, there's also a southern, a second southern axis down here, which would align with the drive aisle into Discovery Park. Uh, South Recreation Avenue also provides the primary access to this, to Discovery Park and South Meridian Fire Station. Uh, at some point, they're going to be closing off the access off of Lake Hazel to Discovery and this would be the way in. For an inter-agency cooperative development agreement, Brighton Developments required to construct South Recreation from a cul-de-sac at the south property line, uh, if you can see my pointer, but down here basically, uh, to Lake Hazel Road. They're going to be required to install ten foot pathways on both sides of this collector. The proposed plat also depicts a ten foot wide pathway running along the south property line. So there is a pathway which you can see running here, connecting to the far that's shown on our pathways plan. Uh, let's see, one of staff's recommendations, uh, with the earlier plat was the original version of the pathway went straight to Recreation Avenue. Our concerns with that was it would be spilling people off in the middle of the road. You know, people, pedestrians tend to take, take the quickest path of resistance. So we were afraid people wouldn't walk up to Recreation and they would just be cutting across and jaywalking. Uh, we also just thought there'd be concerns of people, again, taking the shortest approach and just walking across all this lawn when basically it'd be a better idea to just to realign that pathway. That was one of our recommend, uh, recommendations. Uh, since the staff report, the applicant has realigned this. So what you're seeing now is the version that they've, they've recently done. Three common driveways are proposed with the subdivision. The applicant's provided common drive exhibits was demonstrating no more than three units reserved, whereas a maximum of four are allowed. Uh, they meet all the dimensional requirements. They meet all the dimensional requirements. The applicant has submitted an open space exhibit which reflects 19.5 acre percent of qualified open spaces. It's a little bit less than the 20 acres that went to the planning commission. I'll talk about that shortly. This includes two one acre parkers, this includes two one acre parks at the south perimeter of the property. Half acre park, which is a little larger now toward the center of the development, 100% of the collector buffers, half of the arterial buffer and several trail corridors. The open space exhibit originally included the 55 foot wide far lateral easement, which is what you see here. The original version showed this as being counted as open space. However, the UDC says that protective buffers of a minimum of 10 feet in width can be counted, but they have to be dedicated for access, for active access. So our, our feedback to the applicant was if you want to count this as open space, it has to be usable open space. The applicant has, has mentioned that the irrigation district is not too keen on this being used as open space. So they've just eliminated this from their, their plans. And I'll circle back in a minute about some of the planning commission's recommendations about this. As I said, so the far lateral, which is what you see in the yellow here, runs along the eastern property line. Applicants requested a waiver which, which, from which requires piping this. They've been saying that it's cross prohibitive to pipe this lateral. They prefer to leave it open. The landscape plan includes a fencing plan. There's six foot high wooden fencing provided along South Recreation, the landscape buffering along the side of interior trail connections. There's open style metal fencing that are provided along the portions of the open spaces that are visible from internal roads. They've also left most of this area along the far lateral as open style fencing. Staff had concerns with SEP Ted, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We had issues with what could be happening back here in this lateral, especially if there was solid fencing and you can't see what's going on back there. So this is open style fencing to help prevent that issue. Okay. In the staff report, here's, here's the elevations. The original staff report that you got, the elevations that were submitted were for single family attached. It was duplexes. We circle back to the applicant. One of our recommendations of, of approval was you need to show which lots are the single family attached. There's also a condition that talks about single family attached, meaning duplexes have to go through design review. The applicant subsequently said, oops, we're actually not proposing any single family attached. This is all single family detached. So what you're seeing now here are the most recent versions of the elevations, which are all single family attached. The, the planning commission heard this proposal on December 16th, 2021. Planning Commission ultimately moved to recommend denial of this application. The reasons listed were the, I'll show you here in a second with the, well, I can show you now. The reasons listed, first of all, were the number of lots that were originally bunched up around here in the north. This is a new version here. The, some issues around the common drive, there, there weren't too keen on the common drive, the issues with around trash and service trucks. They had issues with putting a pathway, or with not having some kind of pathway back here. They recommended that if, if on the far, if the irrigation district would not allow a pathway in their easement, in their easement, one of the things that could be done was to just put a pathway next to that. I don't think the applicant is keen on that. They also were reluctant to upzone from R4 to R8. There was a lot of discussion about whether or not there should be a continuation of upzoning. There was a couple of neighbors that showed up that also had the same opinion that we shouldn't be upzoning from R4 to R8. I think the applicant will give you a little background that it was always intended for R8 and the R4 was a holding zone. Again, I'll let you, I'll let them describe that to you. What you're seeing here, I've put in little red boxes to kind of show you what's changed between the planning commission and what's here tonight. The first thing is that they've, they've reduced a lot up here and they've opened up this open space. So you can see it's much more narrow and it's wider here. We recommended a better usable open space there. The other thing they've done is this little sort of squeeze open space. They've opened it up to make it a little larger and a little more usable. And they have, the, the original version of the pathway was, sorry, I actually realized they gave you the wrong one. It was straight here and they bent the pathway here. The, what this did was that this reduced the number of lots from 97 to 95. So they lost two lots. They lost about a half a percent of open space. Stop, as this meets all of the, this meets all the dimensional standards, it meets the density of the comprehensive plan. It meets all of our uniform development code. Staff was supporting this proposal. With that, I would stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Alan, did I read somewhere that, that Planning Commission was also concerned about the area around the, the common drives and that being too, a note in the middle of the development. The common drives here on that, that, yes. Did I understand that there was a concern about that? Because I didn't quite gather if that's the area they were concerned about.
The, the area that they were concerned about was up here. If you look at the original, the original version, which I don't think I included, there was a few more lots and their opinion was that this particular area was just too crowded. They also had some concerns about the number of lots that were in here, which is why the applicant opened up this. But this is, this area here is really the area they were discussing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Okay, my apologies. I thought I read somewhere that they, they didn't favor any common drives in the development at all.
Councilperson Pearl, Mayor, yeah, that's true. That, that's kind of a general statement. Their, their opinion was they just don't like common lots, or sorry, common driveways in general. Numerous reasons, but I think they were talking about parking, garbage, service, et cetera. So yeah, I think that's, I think that's an accurate statement. They're just not huge fans of common driveways in general.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Schreger.
Just, I can't remember off the top of my head, but could you remind us if, what is the minimum lot size for R4?
I believe it's 8,000 square feet. Bill's nodding his head. So I guess I'm starting to learn the code after being here for a while.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions from council for staff, we'll ask the applicant to come forward.
Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. John Wardle, 2929 West Navigator, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and have, be here for our first hearing of this year. Thank you for letting, letting us come and talk about Apex East with you tonight. Alan did a great job and I'm not going to spend too much time on the details of the project as a whole in terms of the overview, but I do want to provide just a little bit of context here. As Alan had mentioned, when we, this is providing you a vicinity map of a variety of projects which we have had approved or in process with the city. We've called the project marketing as pinnacle, but the plats are coming through as apex. And so each of these plat areas will, will carry the name apex like tonight is Apex East. We have previously approved Apex Southeast, Northwest. Apex East is in front of you today, and there's also another application which the city will review at some point in the future called Apex West. Apex East is just on the east side of Discovery Park, which is a great asset for the community. Here's a combined master plan of the projects noting Discovery Park as well as the different phases that we have, have been processed with the city at this time. As mentioned, we did, we are requesting a rezon from R4 to R8. And I'll get into that a little bit more in some detail here. It's 32 acres. We are proposing 95 single family lots, detached, single family lots, and now it's a density just under three units per acre. The average lot size actually with the changes that we did has increased, we're 8,500 square feet per lot. On the open space, just a little bit of clarification here. The areas highlighted in green are the qualified open space. The area in yellow doesn't qualify as open space per the, the city's ordinance. And I will detail that here in a little bit, but the uses that, or the amenities will include a play structure in the north and gazebo benches in the south, as well as creating the first part of the regional pathway that will connect to Discovery Park in, in the near future. There obviously were some items that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There's a question and a statement actually made about compliance with the comprehensive plan. The R4 versus R8 zoning and designation, the standards, the common driver in the northwest area, the open space in lot one, block six, the regional pathway in the southwest corner. And there was provided to you an actual recommendation for denial. Just a little bit of history which Alan has addressed, but back in 2015, the city initiated a, a mass annexation of over 1,300 acres. This was done to, I, I guess what could be said was to protect the city's investments in that area. No harm, no foul, but Kuna was approaching and the city decided we need to make a statement and, and do an annexation and plan for those improvements in that area. In this particular property, the McGurdi's, when it was annexed as an R4, there was a, there was a condition in there that said unless rezoned by the city in accordance with UDC, following application by the owner or developer or future developer, and then in accordance with the zoning ordinance designation at that time. In that spirit, we did, we have requested a rezon for the property. On the left here is the future land use map. It really does show a variety of different land uses out in this area from low to medium to high, even some intense regional mixed use as you go over towards Meridian Road and Lake Hazel. On the right is the actual zoning map as it exists today. R8 is kind of the mustard. The R4 is a little lighter yellow, R15, the darker orange, and the R2 is a very light yellow. As you can see that there are a variety of different uses, rezones that have occurred out here. And really they've all been in compliance with the future land use map, which was approved by the city. Of note, the commission noted that they found that the proposed plat is generally not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. That's a little, it was a little bit of a head scratcher for us because if you look at the requested designation, which we have here, and the designation on the map is medium density residential, and the R8 zone is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Now here's the nuance. And, and some will say tonight that, you know, we need to be absolute on these designations and regulations. But I just want to give you a comparison. R4, minimum frontage is 60 feet. R8 is 40 feet. Minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet in R4 and 4,000 square feet in R8. And in R4, you only are required to provide 12% qualified open space. So in the case of this project, it would be 3.86 acres. And an RA designation, 4.83 acre, 4.838 acres is what would be required for qualified open space. Going to the top here, the minimum frontage on our lots is 59.85 lot feet. So we are 0.15 feet off of the 60 foot requirement. We do have some lots in here that average, that are a minimum square footage of 6,900 square feet. But the overall average of our lots is 8,500 square feet. Like I said, the, the minimum, the average size went up. And in terms of qualified open space, we have 6.29 acres. So we could dial the project back and go to R4. But there, we were looking for a little bit of flexibility while maintaining the same type of density. And that's what we put in front of the city today. The areas that Alan noted very appropriately, I've just highlighted here as well, on the, on the left side is the revised plan given. And then on the right side is the one that, which was in the application that the Planning and Zoning Commission heard. We did modify the, so the three elements here are the common drive in the northwest corner, the common area in lot one, block six, and also the regional pathway in the southwest corner. We did modify the common drive in the northwest corner. We, we did remove a lot and, and created more open space there. In this part, this is where the city is building their combined fire and police station. This access up here in the left, at the northwest corner is actually emergency access as well. And so that common drive has a dual function. We did create a little bit of difference though. Most of these common drives are 25 feet in width. And then the driveway goes right up to it. This case, we actually created it so that there was a path sidewalk. So there's a detached plan or strip. And then there is a five foot sidewalk on these so that we can actually make a pedestrian connection right out to recreation and get over to the park as well, instead of having that driveway be, you know, just a very large sidewalk. We wanted to maintain that same look and feel like we have in the rest of the community. There was also this, the note about the, the regional pathway. On the right hand side shows the, the proposed regional path, pathway plan. There currently aren't any pathways out in this area and we are, will be making the, the first connection of that. So over towards the east. I will note on recreation as well, I, I highlighted there in red, we actually are building a 10 foot sidewalk there so that the regional pathway can connect to the 10 foot sidewalk, but you can also get over to the park. So this, you know, this will start building out the city's pathway plan in South Meridian. I want to go back to just a question or a note on the open space. We did have an original design that showed the open space along the far lateral. We counted that it didn't qualify and so it was pulled back. So in the previous plan, it was, we had about 18 point, point four qualified open space. This new plan, we've actually increased the qualified open space. So the requirement within the zone would simply be, sorry. The requirement would be in an R4 zone, 3.86 acres compared to 6.29. In an RA, it would be 4.83 compared to the 6.29 that we're showing today. As noted, we do concur about modifying that pathway in the southwest corner, have no issue with that. There was some question about moving it maybe a little bit farther to the east, but we have the Williams Pipeline. We really just wanted to cross the Williams Pipeline perpendicularly and then we'll parallel it. It just solves us all some issues later on with their maintenance obligations and requirements. There were a couple of conditions as Alan noted. We'll do a little bit better job next time of reviewing exhibits that go in, but we do not have any attached homes in this community. So item 2A and item 10 are not applicable. Item 2D, which is the far lateral, it is a 55 foot easement. We have 30 on our side and there's 25 feet on the, what we call the east side. Currently, to my knowledge, the city in Meridian does not have a, an agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation, Boise Kuna, the project board to put pathways within their easement. And Boise Kuna is, they, they want to protect their access to there. We do intend to landscape with grasses up to their existing access road, which is on our side, but we can't put trees in there. We are going to put an open metal fence. The homes will open up to it, but we can't put trees, we can grass it. We would really encourage the city to see if they can come up with a cooperative agreement with them, given that Boise Kuna and the Bureau of Reclamation control so many of those laterals in South Meridian. But we don't have that relationship like we do with Nampa Meridian and with settlers. So it is problematic for us to do that. But by maintaining the easement outside of the lots, should the city be able to get that type of arrangement? Let's open it up. Let's make that a pathway that the city can use. Absolutely. But I will note from the, the city's own plan that that part of the far lateral is not on the city's pathway plan. It is coming to the south over into the park. And my guess is this piece of the pathway that shows along the far going that way will have to be outside of the easement because as it stands right now, Boise Kuna does not allow that. Finally, again, with, with the recommendation that Planning and Zoning Commission made, we, we don't agree with their findings, in particular, the rezon findings, one, two, and three, and the preliminary plat findings, one and five. Apex East is compliant with the Meridian Conference of Plan. There is some question about the rezon from R4 to R8, but dimensionally and density wise, we are the same. We just were asking for a little bit of flexibility to provide, to, to let us work the site. In particular, it's not your typical square site. We are wedged up against Lake Hazel with a very narrow neck and the far lateral on the east side. And we feel like we've done a really good job designing this project based on those, those constraints. It is consistent with comprehensive plan in terms of providing diverse housing and it is not detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. If we came in with an R four plat, there really wouldn't be any change in density. In fact, we could reduce the wider buffers we have on recreation. They're not the minimum. The minimum would be twenty five feet from back a sidewalk, and I think we go anywhere from thirty seven to forty two feet from back a sidewalk to the fence line. We could reduce other areas. We don't feel like that's the right way to do it when we're talking about the overall look and feel of the project. We do concur with staff recommendations for approval, including the city and agency comments and conditions, including the noted modifications I just mentioned. We do disagree with finding zoning commission. I haven't always landed like that. I don't think we have ever had this come up before. Doesn't mean that it's not worth conversation, but we don't agree. The project does comply with comprehensive plan. And we requested the city approve, the, the city council approved the rezone, the preliminary plat and the DA modification with SASS recommended conditions of approval with the noted modifications and also modify the rezone and preliminary plat findings. And I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. I think it might be a good opportunity just to get an update on Pinnacle holistically. So we're having a lot of discussions about schools. It's one of the biggest issues that we're having. I think originally Pinnacle as a whole was like a ten year, like a ten year build out. Are you guys ahead of schedule? Can you give us a flavor for the total number of housing units that are going to be delivered? You know, coming up in the next few years. Sorry to put you on the spot on the whole thing, but I think we need to get a feel for that, given how large it is.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, appreciate the question. Thank you. With the exception of Apex thirty three, the rest of the, the property had, was part of that initial preliminary plat and solidifying or making modifications to the rezone, to zoning as well. Again, this all came in, all the property you see over here all came in as our four. And when we brought forth our first two preliminary plats, we also did the rezones that we felt were appropriate for the property as we would build that out. With that said, we have two preliminary plats which are under development right now. Apex Southeast, which is directly adjacent to Discovery Park on the west and south of Lake Hazel. The first phase, which is seventy seven lots, we are paved, but we are not platted in terms of being that finalized. So that plat will get recorded sometime here in the next thirty days, fingers crossed. We also have another phase right below that, Apex Southeast number two, and that's another sixty lots. But we will, that won't be paved until probably middle of this year, probably May, June, by the time that phase is. And we have Apex Northwest where we are building our amphitheater, the community center and the future Meridian library here in the corner. And we have fifty six lots which are also paved but not platted. And we would expect to have those delivered in the next thirty days. And then a second phase of another fifty two lots just the north of that, which would be a late summer build out for us. So this year, just off the top of my head, there'll be about two hundred and fifty home sites which will be platted and have the potential to be built on. I also want to note that the, the donation that we were able to do with Gem Prep has occurred. They've started construction on their school. Their operational date will begin August this year of twenty twenty two. So they are on a fast track to get that built. And it is a K through twelve school. They obviously will ramp up. My expectation is the, the younger grades will fill first and those will trickle up. But they have a goal of, you know, up to five hundred and fifty kids there at the school. We also, as we noted before, this, this body, we have a ten acre, a West Ada school site. We all know that there are all sorts of conversations there, but that's a commitment we've made. And we continue to stand by at the time that they're ready to do something, that site's available for them. One of the other things that we have done, Councilman Schrader, because I know it's a hot button, I mean, education is a hot button, but the other one that you hear a lot is transportation. So let me just note what we have been doing. Starting probably within the next two weeks, I'm sorry to everybody who lives in South Meridian, but that intersection will shut down again. The Locust Grove Lake Hazel, we are, we are starting the construction of the dual lane roundabout and five lanes each way on Lake Hazel for a quarter mile as well as three lanes north and south for an eighth of a mile. That work will start here shortly. And the goal is by May, we will be paved out and that roadway improvements will be in place. We've also entered into a cooperative development agreement on behalf of the city and the ACHD to build another half mile of Lake Hazel, basically at the west end of the city park, going all the way over to the keep subdivision. There, there were some reasons to help facilitate that in particular for the investment that the city has made out in Discovery Park. But getting that roadway improvement done. When that work is done, then the highways issue is going to step in and rebuild the intersection of Eagle Road and Lake Hazel, again, to a five lane standard. That will be a signalized intersection, given the grades. We don't want to have a roundabout up there on the hill. And then going the other direction, we also have started conversations with ACHD to build the other three quarters of mile from where we will terminate here. All the way out to Meridian Road, it will be a five lane road. We need to sequence that because we obviously have another half mile that needs to get built this next year. And we can't have all these intersections and roads close at the same time. But our idea would be that that piece would get built and start in twenty twenty three for open twenty twenty four. And then I think ACHD's goal on their intersection is in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. There's a lot going on right now in terms of the investment that, that, that the city has made in their facilities, both with the Discovery Park and the Fire Department. But that we're also making out there so that we can have an education piece that's in place from the very beginning, but that we can also have a transportation system that's pretty well built out and we just don't limp along with some additional pavement on the side of the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's one of the things we appreciate about you guys. You're a good partner and you help solve, you know, problems. The, the problems that come with our groin pains. I guess, you know, I feel like you did a good job answering the question about the total number of units that would be built this year. Have your plans changed in, let's just say, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four? Do we have an idea? Has it changed the total number of units you feel you'll be delivering? Are you moving that forward? Is it according to the original schedule that you outlined?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. I will say we, we have a lot of lots. We have many lots coming on in twenty twenty two, and that's just a timing question. There were, I think we all recognize that last year was hard, both from construction, but also plan approvals. I would say, expect that we would average probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred lots a year. And so, yes, we have a lot more coming on right now. But it's, it's in line with what we anticipated for the project being probably a ten year project. Now that could change, but that's, that's what we are, we're still with our plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you, John. We, there, we heard an application last week, also in the southeast area where it was presented that Gem Prep would, would relieve some of the concerns in the school district. And so despite the fact that applicant isn't financially contributing to Gem Prep, more than one applicant is stating that they believe that that will create some relief. And the, the question came up about whether Gem Prep is specifically for this geographic area or if any student is permitted to attend there. And it was our understanding that any student in any geographic area in Meridian could attend there and it wasn't geographic specific. So can you kind of comment on how you believe this really truly does relieve concerns over school capacity for your development? If Gem Prep isn't, if, if the students aren't specifically being prioritized for Southeast Meridian, that's my first question. My second question, and if you'd rather answer that and me come back at the mayor's pleasure, we can do it that way too. Because my second question has to do with open space.
Mr. Mayor, if I can answer part A then. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro. That's a great question. We actually worked really closely with Gem Prep and their application for a charter. You know, one of the things is it is a public school. So it's a, if we want to call it a school of choice, but there are opportunities for anybody within the community to attend there. Should they work through the lottery system? With that stated, Gem Prep also noted that there are three priority areas. There's a priority area that, and I'm not going to be ashamed of saying this, but there's a priority area around Pinnacle. They look at what's there and what's anticipated and that's the first. So if those students come in and they, in the lottery system, they're there, there's space, they would get chosen first. Then they go out a ring from there, which I don't know exactly what the dimension is, but there is a, there is a dimension in the south area and that would be ring two. That group would, from the lottery would apply and if there were spaces, they would be allowed to attend. And then beyond that, is if there's any other availability, when that next window opens up, then it would be open to the community at large. I, I, I think the charter school here provides a short term opportunity. Because I don't know that there have been too many of these that have done, been done in Meridian within a planned community. Now, we do have charter schools in other places, but we, we felt like they were a good partner because we do know that, you know, West Ada as well is, is a high quality partner. And we've partnered with them on land donations and improvements. But we felt like this jumped the process forward where West Ada may need some more time. With that said, we're, we're committed to education. And we still put that on the table that this project in particular has uniquely shown what can be done when we have problems and we went out and found a solution to that problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Sorry to get so technical about this, but you're, you're very intimately aware of our conversations regarding school capacity and the challenges that have come with it. When they prioritize that, is that the number one priority? With lottery system, there's a variety of things that the school decides regarding student, student ability. There's, there's a list of things that they consider when they choose who, who is accepted, you know, when they applied. Do you know if that geographic location is their number one priority for choosing those students? Or is it going to come after the other items that are typically considered in the lottery?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, I can't tell you for sure. I don't know. I do know there are a variety of items that they consider. Family. So for example, if, if there's a Gem Prep student currently that's going, attending Overland and they, I think they would have priority to move out here if this is closer for them and their family would also be. So I, I, I do know that they have a great mission. I, I know that education wise, they are, they are very focused on what they do. But there might be a number of things that would perhaps limit how many students that are directly around here could go in. But they were very clear that they felt like there wasn't a charter school opportunity in this location and they felt like this would be the draw directly here.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up with another question?
Councilman Pro.
Um, would you mind bringing up the slide that shows the, the open space? Or where the parks are located? So just a question about, I, I actually find it interesting and not, not necessary to have, to have, not necessarily have that green space there up in the, the northwest corner per se. I guess I'm trying to understand the functionality of that truly as, as it's located, as, as it relates to the rest of the development. So was there consideration made after the P and Z conversation about putting some of that green space in the center, maybe around where those common driveways are in the middle of the development? And if there was, what, what conversations were had and, and why were they, you know, why was that area not chosen? And I just, it feels like that, you know, the, the open spaces are at two ends of the project and there's not any, anything that's really central, especially not having a pathway along the far lateral. It seems like from north to south, it, it's a little bit disjointed.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Pro, let me go back to one graphic here. Let's not forget that this project directly fronts on Discovery Park, which is a large park. So just that in context. When we looked specifically at the question that the commission asked about that area in the Northwest corner. And I think it was a, it was a valid, a valid question. Where I've written common drive, you know, this is a, this is an arterial coming on to a collector and we have a fire station here. Probably not our best planning moment on the right hand side where we had that lot right over there against there. So it gives us an opportunity to actually do some birmingham and do some things to pull that back. We did also look at consolidating the common area in the middle. I think that was a great suggestion about, you know, making it a little bit more accessible and contiguous. So that you had some more open space. With that in mind, we're not at a deficit of open space here. We can talk about, you know, where the open spaces could be. And like I said, we have some very unique locations on this property as we wedge in a few locations. We didn't really feel like there was a need to do something here in the middle where those two common lots were. It wasn't, we just don't, we just didn't feel like there was a need to add any more open space here in the middle. Given that we had open space here, they all have really direct access over to the city park. And then we'll have that pathway system along the south, which will open up a lot, you know, an amenity that's really important for the city, which are the pathways. So no, we didn't feel like there was a need to add any open space in the middle there.
Council, additional questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Cavanagh.
John, just maybe quickly, if you could walk through council. What are you able to achieve with the R eight rezone that you weren't able, aren't going to be able to achieve under the R four?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, Councilman Cavanagh, just go back to the dimensional standards. When you look at our lots and I highlighted a little box down here below because there's, again, there's always a carve out in code, right? But the minimum frontage on the lots with an R four zone is sixty feet. When you look at our lots and you carve out the, the piece in, down below, which are like knuckles and corners and things like that, where you can have wedge shaped lots. We are point one five tenths of a foot off. Could I make that up? I can make it up. Really, the issue is in this grouping right here. And I've created two common lots on the end and I could absorb that. So that we can easily fix that. The other one is on the lot sizes. I have some lots which are less than the eight thousand square feet. But could I go through and could I, you know, squeeze things out and make that work? I sure could. These lots right here, they're seventy two hundred square feet. So all I need to do is add ten more feet on the back in a buffer that's not required. But we actually think having that buffer along the city park is better than having those homes closer to. So those lots are seventy two hundred square feet. So Commissioner or Councilman Cavanagh, I think I may have called you Commissioner earlier. I apologize if I did. Could we go and hit the exact standards with R four? We could. But I think we probably also would look very closely at that open space requirement, which is significantly less than what we're providing. So there are trade offs. And I think if we are going to have trade offs, what is the benefit? Well, the benefit is the density is effectively the same. There's, there would be no change in density. In fact, we probably could go back and look at the dimensional standards and maybe add a couple more lots and still be within the dimensional standards. Based on the feedback, we removed a couple lots. But we feel like the request for R eight just allows us to do a little bit more in design. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
I appreciate those comments. I, I think you're right there and, and it's beautiful.
I, I think you're right there, and, and it's beautiful project. I bury the lead. It's just a great design. I'm just surprised it isn't R four. This is a great example of where I'd, I'd put the minimum amount of open space. 12% is plenty. It's less, I mean, you're adjacent to a regional park for goodness sake, so. I think if you moved those two lots up by the Common Drive and put them in where the center open space is, you save an acre going to, save an acre of open space, minimum open space going from R eight to R four. You move, I mean, it's a somewhat minor redesign, but make it R four, have the bare minimum open space. Because effectively, you've got to read, I mean, this is the perfect example of why we want to encourage folks to utilize the regional park. That's where the investment is. So that's where they're going to go to recreate, which is fantastic, so. That's really what, how I saw this is you just make those adjustments you've described, make it R four and, and utilize all the space, leaving minimal open space, understanding the regional parks next door. It's a great project.
A question or comment, just so in case you wanted?
I don't think I asked you anything. I guess I was just, maybe you can provide just a brief response to, to that. I think R four is, you're 100% correct. It is compliant as presented with the comp plan. It doesn't violate its terms, I agree with you. But R four meant something. You're right there, you've got an opportunity to do it. And perhaps it wouldn't cost you any lots. I don't think open space is that critical here at all.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I appreciate the comment. We haven't ever tried to do the minimum. And, but I, I appreciate the note, and I also, you know, respect the investment of the city park there, and we, we intend to use it and use it a lot. We still think that there are, there are some needs for having some amenity. These are minor, we're not, this doesn't have a pool, because we have the other pools in the other location, and those, those are, have some other amenities there that these, this community will also benefit from. I think while we could put the open space in the corner, feel that it would be, again, we can look at it, but I feel like having it internal where the residents get that benefit is, is our preference. But I, I hear what you're saying, that we definitely, we could move it over, we could make it. So we just hit the R four designation exactly, and.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Close the loop, but it solves that Common Drive problem, too, and you got a fire station next to houses. Even adding that one, removing that one lot has some impact, but boy, think if you could just remove those other two adjacent to a fire station and a busy entrance. You know net difference in lots. Public could make a nice, kind of a beautiful entry into the subdivision. You have the same number of lots.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, good point. We will have an emergency access there regardless. We have to have that, given the way that this one is configured. The loop, we have too many lots with just a single point of access. So we, we have to provide that access over there, just in case, if the road got blocked here, they need to be able to get out. So if it got blocked here, they could still get out this way, but that's, so we were trying to accomplish, I mean, it won't ever happen, but you could probably pull hose from the fire station over if there was something right there, but we, we work really closely with your fire department on, on what we need to do, and that, that access will still be there. Just, it's a function of where we put the ballards to limit cars going in and out.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
So looks like that on that southernmost street, there'll need to be a bridge over the far lateral. Is that something that you would, would be involved in building? Or is that something that an applicant on the east side would eventually have to do? And then also, just wondering, with the, the drive that's in the middle, the exits that's in the middle of the development, obviously, there's probably not going to be a required sidewalk, because it doesn't, it doesn't connect to another street on the west side. But will you be putting any kind of safety measures there to cross over to the park? Or they, or will they have to walk down to the park entrances south?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perro, I need to look at this pretty closely, but when I, we've been working on this design with ACHD and with the city of Meridian. I am pretty confident that we have a return on the other side of this road. So when you, when the sidewalk comes out, there will be a safe passage across to the park at that main entrance. So, so I will confirm, but it's, I, I'm pretty sure there is a sidewalk or a curb return that will receive it on the other side of the road as well, so that there will be a safe passage to the park at the main entrance. As to the other question on the bridge, we actually will be required to either build or trust fund our half of it. So we are, we are responsible for doing half. It's been our experience, the highway district actually prefers us to trust fund, and so that they have the dollars, and they will be able to work that bridge crossing with the other property owner, if and when they decide to develop.
Council, additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Mary.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add one comment, at least for the record purposes. And I wasn't involved with a lot of the discussions with the properties. Oh, you were, and Mr. Hood was involved directly with them. I did deal with all of their attorneys, and I did with some of them. So the R four, this is just, I was just putting some context around the ask. So there was never a commitment or a promise of the city that the DA modification was an automatic thing. That's never was a, a conversation I ever had. But the conversations I had with the attorneys was the R four designation was merely a, a way to move this forward and get it done. It's not a desire or an intention of the city that it would all remain R four forever. And many of the property owners are still the same ones. So I don't want them to view that, that the city is somehow now has changed their mind, and that is your desire that all remain R four because of this commitment that was made six, seven years ago. That was the context of the discussion back then. We were moving forward to get the annexation accomplished and wanting their buy-in with the idea that something else would come about. Again, never was a commitment that we would automatically agree to any change, but that we were certainly receptive to change because we were expecting it to be changed. I just wanted to make sure that part of the context, because, you know, not, not all of you here, again, I didn't talk to property owners, and the mayor was involved with those. Mr. Hood with planning was, but I did talk to a lot of them, and I did talk to a lot of lawyers. That was one of the concerns they had at the time.
No, just to add in, I mean, my recollection was everything came in in R fours, the holding zone. That was the intention, and then we even had some that asked for a different zoning at that time, which we said no, because we wanted it to be looked at in the context of the current development whenever that occurred. But that was my recollection. Thank you, Mr. Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we have two people signed up. First is Wendy Webb, representing Southern Rim Coalition.
Say your name and address, so I can be recognized for 10 minutes.
My name is Wendy Webb. My address is 2299 East Lodge Trail, Meridian, Idaho. Again, I am speaking in behalf of the Southern Rim Coalition. We were actually contacted by a property owner in the keep, which is the adjacent property on the southeast corner. They were disappointed in the request to change the zoning from R four to R eight. I reached out to our members to see how they felt about the changes, especially with the more recent onset of our affordable housing crisis. Overwhelmingly, we all felt the same. We are opposed to the rezone of this plat from R four to R eight. I'm not going to pretend that I understand the legal implications or the requirements of the development agreement that occurred seven years ago. If the request is here before you tonight, I am under the assumption and impression that you can deny that request. Otherwise, why would we all be here? We are opposed to the rezone for three reasons. Number one is the principle. By changing the zoning in this plat and other applications, it degrades the integrity of the plan and those executing the change. Citizens are frustrated and are, are starting to lose their faith in, in the city over and over again. As you probably remember, the Southern Rim has, has requested to stop allowing step-ups in zoning. Too often, applications requesting step-ups are being presented. What kind of precedents are being set? Yes, this development is really on the low side for an RA request, but what about others in the future? If it is so close, it should not be too difficult to change the plan and keep as a, keep it as an R four designation. I know it was discussed that they could remove the, the buffer or the, some of the strip behind the homes, and that, and they could enlarge those lots to make them fit the R four zoning. Another option would be take out one home along that strip, and that would also change it to the R fours, R four zoning by reducing it by one house. Second, proper transition is not being held accountable as a comprehensive plan encourages. The property to the east has a very large estate home. The home is less than 10 years old. Recently, the owners invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in landscaping, adding trees, a brick paved drive, an orchard, et cetera. Clearly, the property value is high, and a proper transition should be encouraged. At the southeast corner of the proposed development, the property borders the subdivision called the keep. The average lot size in the keep is 33,000 square feet. Very different than the average proposed in the Apex East subdivision of 8,000. I believe it's now 8,500 something square feet. The original designation of R four zoning is more appropriate for this land. Third, variety of housing as encouraged in the comp plan is not occurring. Almost everything being passed in the last year is R eight and above. There is a desire for larger lots. All 58 lots in the keep were pre-sold. 90% of the buyers and new homeowners are from the local area, just wanting larger lot and more, a larger lot and more elbow room. Community surveys have shown the desire for and importance of open space in our community. Open space is desired not only in parks and neighborhood open spaces, but also in larger lots. The availability of larger lots are almost non-existent in South Meridian. Those are the reasons we have for opposing the rezone. But when we look at the big picture, we have a repeat of last week's meeting and the meeting that was held in November with the Centerville subdivision. Until we can figure out as a community, how to build three new schools in South Meridian, it is absolutely irresponsible to continue to approve any further development, any further residential applications. Don't get me wrong, we are not opposed to development. It's crucial for our economy, for the state of Idaho, it always has been. We just feel like it needs to be thoughtful and responsible. The Southern Rim Coalition, we like Brighton. They are a responsible developer. They're one of the most responsible. If all the homes backing the adjoining property were R four zoning standards, and it was only the home back, homes backing Lake Hazel that were R eight standards, we would still be in opposition. It is about the principle and the precedent, sticking to the plan and setting a precedent that others can follow. I'm only here to honestly represent residents of South Meridian. You need to know how we think and how we feel about these important matters that affect our community. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Go with Mr. Cavanagh first on that one.
Thanks.
I need my ears more than, than, so.
Wendy, I'm sure that, one, thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it. I'm sure some of my counselors may dive into some of the questions I, I may have, but I guess for me, one of the bases is now, I understand you're kind of representing the Southern Rim Coalition, is, does your organization have a basis on which you determine if you're going to support or be in opposition to a rezone?
We, we have a mission statement that talks about responsible growth and, about responsible growth. And I'm trying to think how, how to phrase it, and putting me on the spot. And we are fairly loose. We have five people on our board right now, and we keep in communication. We're not in a lot of communication all the time. Last week, we had a different representative for us speak for the Centerville subdivision. We keep in touch a lot through Facebook. We have a Facebook group, and so before this application came to planning and zoning, I just put the, I try to be very neutral. I try not to throw any, anything out there that's nasty or, or not the right, right way to go. But I just put in there that, that the application was requesting a rezone from R four to R eight, and I wondered how our membership felt about it. Within two hours, I had over 20 responses, and they were all against a rezone and all concerned about the open space in, in South Meridian. It was very quick.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Oh, and, and I ask this because I think that your organization have really tried to position yourselves as kind of the, the thought leader representing citizens on this side of the diet.
Right.
To these things, and so it's helpful for me to know, and maybe the council as well, to say, these are the basis of why we would oppose this rezone. But if it didn't do A and B, then we would be in, in support of it. It, it's a struggle, it's just being very candid for me to, kind of, I think what you're touching is kind of the arbitrary nature of how your organization makes those recommendations about either being in favor or being in opposition. And I'm just trying to kind of wrap my, my head around it, because just from, from my perspective, I look at this, again, the R four was a holding pattern. I think that's a, a good opportunity, maybe for your organization to meet with the city and understand that history, so that you can maybe make some more informed recommendations in the future. But from my perspective, if we have an application that is requesting to rezone to R eight, but their density is being fairly limited, and frankly, I, I agree with your point about it being a little bit inconsistent with the comp plan, because it's almost too low of density based on what the comp plan's calling for. So those were some of my, I, I read your, your testimony at planning and zoning, and, and those were some of the things that I was scratching my head on, saying, wow, I, these are some things that I've heard the Southern Rim Coalition come and speak in favor of and asking for in other applications. And to see that brought here, and then to also continue to see the Southern Rim come to oppose it, it just, it makes me just, I'm, I'm a little perplexed about the basis on which you make a determination of this is why we're going to support something, and if we're not. And if it's just a polling of members, and members say thumbs down, and some members say thumbs up, and that's how you decide, that's, that's okay, too. I just, I was always under the impression that you guys had a much more strict process or rubric about how you would determine if you would support, if you guys were going to speak in favor of something or in opposition. So that, just, just some of my feedback, based on kind of what I've seen in the years up here.
I think I understand a little bit about what you're talking about. We've always asked for open space, and we've asked for lower densities. And so it is confusing when we come here tonight and we say, we really want R four. I think it's the precedent. I feel like Brighton is a wonderful developer, and they put a lot forward to our community. But I think that in some ways, it's not fair to change their zoning from R four to R eight and not, and not allow other applications to also change. And not every applicant is as good as Brighton and as responsible as a developer. So I feel like we need to be careful with the precedent that we're setting and allowing the zoning changes. You're right, I do not understand the legal obligations with the development agreement and that holding place. But I am a little confused that it was a holding place for R four, and in all the developments that are coming in, nothing is R four. It's all R eight and R 15 so far. I understand in the Apex West, which is coming up, one of them will be an R two, but there's nothing R four. And I think it was, I don't remember how many thousands of acres. So I, I just think we're missing out on an opportunity to have one piece of that stay as an R four. And then also the Southern Rim Coalition. And then also the Southern Rim Coalition, I miss Susan Karns. I really do. This is not a place that I'm excited to be. But I do really care about the community in South Meridian. James Phillips spoke last week and and he did a great job and he's been an asset to our team. Now I'm forgetting what I was gonna say.
Mr. Mayor. I just, I mean, and I want to add, I don't want that, because you you touched on this. I I'm really glad you're here, too, and I'm really glad that you're representing the Southern Rim Coalition. I think you've always brought, it's very evident that you care about our community. And you've always tried to be really diplomatic. So I'm I'm glad that you're here and I and I appreciate your your comments. And I'm not trying to to joust with you. It just, I think it would be, it's always going to be more help for me to understand this is, this is the basis. This is the the metrics that an application needs to meet in order for the Southern Rim to support. Or these are the things that if they occur, we're going to oppose it. Help, it helps me to, because I I value your organization and the perspective that you bring, I try to tap into that. If I if I don't have a a consistency about where you're coming from on something, it makes it hard for me to understand your opposition or support when that comes.
So to that point, a couple of years ago, I believe Susan Karns led a change to to, I'm not sure if it was to the UDC, to the comp plan, to to stop allowing step ups. And that was the whole, that was her whole point was to stop allowing step ups in zoning, in the changing in zoning. So that's always been something that the Southern Rim Coalition has fought for, is to not allow step ups. Once the flume is is in place, that we don't have an application come before and ask for a step up. That was always been something the Southern Rim Coalition has has asked for.
Mr. Mayor, I recognize I said I was only going to have one, maybe one more, just to wrap this up, and then I will, I will shut up, I promise. So Wendy, is there isn't a scenario then from the Southern Rim Coalition standpoint where they would ever be supportive of a change in in zoning if it were, if it resulted in an increase in density?
There are some obvious changes or some obvious times when changes have to be made. But I don't think this is one of them. I think there, you know, if there's a commercial aspect that comes in somewhere or if the city, you know, if something happens, sometimes there there do have to be changes. I can't say hard and fast that there there can't be.
Also, Mr. Mayor.
But if I thank you, Wendy, and we do so appreciate having this role in the community of neighbors advocating. I think that's important and I appreciate that you're organized. I think that provides a lot of help in terms of having the conversations. One thing I'm struggling with, so they're providing six point two nine acres of open space. And the minimum requirement for an R four is three point eight six acres. They're providing two point four three acres extra. I divide that by ninety five units. And I Googled to find out there are forty three thousand five hundred sixty square feet in an acre. That means that each unit has a delta of additional open space of over a thousand square feet. So what I'm struggling with is if they met the minimum, they could easily just get rid of a bunch of this open space. And they would have more than a thousand extra square feet potentially per lot. So that's why I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the opposition to the R eight. That to me is a real challenge because they actually could easily pass the minimum if they weren't providing that open space. Is that part of the conversation for you guys? Is it just the precedent of it because you feel like up zones were abused in the past? Is that where this is coming from? Like, help me?
I think you're right. Brighton has done a great job providing open space and we really appreciate that. And it's been really hard in these shoes to try to figure that out. I think it's more the precedent, maybe of what's happened in the past and and what's going forward. I mean, I and I look at the development that was denied last week. They worked so hard with the residents. I really applaud Becky for all that she did. But what it came down to was the schools. And and you didn't, you know, you put it on hold because of schools and I I just, I'm not sure that it's fair that we do one thing for one developer and another for another. So it's nothing against Brighton. It's nothing against development. It's just, you know, setting a precedent and, you know, and the principle behind it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mr. Schrader.
Maybe that's a good clarification. Maybe Mr. Neri or the planning staff can step in. Certainly, the rezone opens up that question. But to the extent that this was just a simple R four application, yeah, I'm having a hard time seeing, given that it's already annexed, what ground we would have to stand on to stop it from moving forward. But someone tell me if I'm off base. I believe it would be entitled at that point.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Mr. Schrader. No, you are correct. I mean, without, this is already annexed property. So the only discretion here, and again, the difference to an annexed entitled property, even on a DA modification is now we're going to have reasons that have to go beyond just not in our best interest. They have to be more specific. They have to be more pointed. One thing I can explain, and maybe that would help this witness as well as whoever is online. Step ups in the past were automatic. It didn't need, they didn't need a discretionary choice of the council to move from an R four to an R eight. Now they do. So Ms. Karns did leave an effort to remove that automatic requirement and that worked. It does no longer exists. It's not in the comp plan. So that was successful. So it is a decision point. So you're correct in that the the decision still is a discretion on the council. But as I had stated earlier, again, when these properties were annexed, the the cities, at least response to these property owners were, we understand that you don't know what you want to do with it yet. We understand we don't, we don't know what it will be ultimately. So not only will we recognize that a DA modification is going to be asked for, the city actually paid for it. So the first time they asked for a DA modification for all of these properties, the cost of absorbing that expense was on the city, not the property owner. Because they recognized that something else was going to come in front of them that wasn't necessarily going to be an R four. Doesn't mean it couldn't be or wasn't wanted to be, but they knew it might be something else. So those those two factors, I think, are part of the decision that the council is mulling is because of those prior conversations and discussions and and at least minimal commitment to the asking. And but you are correct, the the past, that was a commonplace thing, step ups, but it was automatically allowed and it is no longer automatically allowed.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. So you had mentioned two things, one that that this would degrade the integrity of the plan. I assume you mean the comprehensive plan. I actually think that us setting a precedence for approving a development that's in our flume is setting a good precedence. So right now, the flume says R eight. It doesn't say R four. So I think that when we're going to talk about precedence, it creates more of a precedence problem for the city not to approve a zone within its plan than so as far as I'm concerned, we create a precedence problem by saying this should stay as R four because that's not what's in our comp, that's not what is in our future land use map. So there's that element of it. The second thing, when we talk about step up, I don't love that phrase. I think it creates confusion. To me, a step up only exists if they're trying to get a higher density than what's in in the comprehensive plan, which they're not asking for. They're asking for what is already in the comprehensive plan. They're not asking for R fifteen, which would be a step up unless I'm not understanding the term step up. And certainly, I would invite the staff to correct me if I'm wrong about what I'm saying. But this isn't a step up. They're asking for what the the comprehensive plan has currently marked in there as medium density residential. And they're on the low, very low end of that. So I just wanted to clarify those two things because that this doesn't degrade the integrity of the plan. They're they're proposing something that is in the plan currently, which is medium density residential. So so I just wanted to clarify that. The second thing I wanted to ask is, you mentioned the owner to the east. Are you speaking on the on that owner's behalf? I don't know the owner's name, so I don't know if they're one of the individuals that sent a letter in. But I would, I would think it wouldn't be fair to speak and make assumptions on their behalf.
I I am not speaking on their behalf. She will be testifying next.
Okay, great.
I'm just letting you know what's there.
Thank you.
Just letting you know what's there. And I'm trying to remember all the points that have been made. Is that okay if I, Mayor, if I go ahead? So he says, thank you for the clarification on the modification development agreement. You're right, I don't understand that. I am wondering how many other parcels in the city have a holding on them for for that kind of zoning because I I do feel it's kind of misleading to the citizens. If it's being held in an R four, we kind of think it's an R four. And so I just wonder if is that happening in other places in the city? I don't know. It's okay. I hope not because that is really hard to to figure out. And I I do understand the flume does say medium density. You're right, I shouldn't have 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 said that. It's just going back to what map says R four. I guess there's too many maps to to try and and keep, you know, too many different things and and it is confusing when you do, when they have to request the zoning change. I mean, when you see that in a hearing application request to rezone from R four to R eight, the flag goes up. And I think that's where the flag went up from all the residents in this area. And nobody looked back to the development agreement of two thousand fifteen or understood that. And so in a way, it's kind of misleading for the property owners of that area.
Well, what might be helpful is for Bill and Bill, maybe to get together with the Southern Rim Coalition and provide all those areas from annexation where the current R four holding pattern doesn't align with the flume to at least provide that information
Thank you.
for future applications.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I want to tease Wendy a bit. So you you weren't happy that Susan did that, no automatic step up now? So, no, I
No.
It it was a good thing. I mean, it it was something that was no longer automatic. So people can actually talk about and discuss it. So
Right.
Don't don't tell her I said that. But I'm I'm glad to see you're hard and fast on those step ups. You know, not all properties, forty acres on flat ground with no neighbors around. You know, we have to deal with these unusual parcels sometimes that are on hillsides with angles and especially canals. So sometimes the developers do have to request certain things to make it make it work. And and I guess I I want to make sure your your members understand and in in Councilman Pro, you know, definitely laid out the flume, you know, the future land use map is it's medium density and this does does meet that. But we would not approve all requests to step up. I mean, we look at each one on an individual case. And what I found being on council is people vote with their pocketbook. And what I mean by that is when it comes to, oh, R four to R eight, more homes, less value, it impacts my property values. You know, that's the first thing people consider. And and when you really get down into the weeds and and you'll get there, you know, hang in there. That's all I'll tell you. Hang in there, you'll get there. The business of government has its own lingo and different things and 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 you're bright, you'll you'll get it. It'll it'll come. But I I think if if you your group can have the discussion about the value of property and a development which you're saying goes from R four to R eight, but yet when they include more open space and if you say, okay, if we're to say, no, you're going to be R four, they can have less open space, a little more density. And that's where the value actually goes down. Those properties will be less in value than they are with more amenities and more open space. And I think that's what your membership wants. Let's preserve what we have. And I don't densities is is an issue of any sort. Everyone would love to have everyone five acres, ten acre parcels. And unfortunately, those those days are long gone. North Meridian, on the farm, you know, and those days are long gone. But we do want still nice places and we want to have that value protected. And people go, oh, that's that's a nice development. And and you're right about Brighton, but i- is there a way that, and and I think the mayor offered a good good suggestion of of having planning folks talk to your coalition, but are there other ways that we can help the group understand some of these issues because it is complicated at times? That sometimes that density increase and what they're trying to do will work for them and work for surrounding property owners in keeping their values steady as opposed to possibly in their minds degrading their property value. So is there anything else that you can think of that? And and you don't have to say anything tonight, but think about that and and see if there's ways we can help make people more informed about this process and how to look at some of these things that helps them understand, hey, this is beneficial doing it this way as opposed to just, oh, R four, well, that's that's better than R eight. When and that's, that's what we tried away is, is this actually a better result by by changing this and helping everybody in that whole process? So I guess I don't have a question, but I I definitely would like a comment if you have one.
Thank you. We do appreciate the suggestion of meeting with planning and zoning and Mr. Neri to understand that. Just another thought, this is just my individual thought, something I haven't discussed with the Southern Rim Coalition. Larger lots, more setbacks between houses make a property value higher, in my opinion, because your property value is not as dependent on your neighbors. If your neighbor doesn't keep their house up and you're five feet away, it can degrade your property value. So that's one thing that I do, you know, I appreciate open space. But there is great value in in setbacks between houses, too. I think that's what saved Meridian through the years, is having so much is having big lot sizes. It's kept the neighborhoods from becoming throwaway neighborhoods. So I've seen that in a lot of communities.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holden. Wendy, yeah, I appreciate that comment. Of course, that's where homeowner association comes in and people love them and hate them. So
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Pro.
Not so much a question, but just you had mentioned that you didn't think that there were other R four lots in this area. I'm I'm pretty sure there are some in the the northwest section of Apex. John had mentioned that there are R four lots in that this evening. And then there's another development that's going to be on Eagle Road across from the keep on the west side, excuse me, on the east side, that that is a mixed size where there's going to be some smaller lots and some larger lots. There'll be some estate sized lots in there as well. So there are actually some larger lots coming into that area. And I'm sure the city would be more than willing to to show you where those are going to be, the ones that are approved. And if we're looking at a ratio of large lots versus small lots, if you look at an overall ratio of that area, there are a lot of large lots. What's me, which means that if we're truly going to hold to our requirement in the comp plan to provide a variety of housing, it would mean we bring more dense housing into the area, not less. And also, if we consider not only the the ratio of larger lots to smaller lots as an obligation of our comp plan, but also the type, the types of buyers that can buy from a cost standpoint, there are many lots in that area that are seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollar homes and higher. There aren't a lot that that are five hundred thousand and less. So so from that perspective, us as a council has to consider, are we truly considering the variety of housing as an obligation in our comprehensive plan is not bringing in density actually meeting that requirement?
Yes, I would appreciate seeing some R four lots of, I think it was thirty three thousand acres that was annexed. It would be nice if if some part of that thirty three thousand acres stayed R four. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, that's not those lots. I'm talking about projects that have been approved already, that are completely approved, that not the not the lot, not the properties that are in holding that are designated R four, that are that are annexed but are not not approved subdivisions. I'm talking about subdivisions that are already plotted.
Not aware of those.
Council on additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Wendy.
Mr. Mayor, next is Mary Affleck.
Mayor, if you set your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes. Three minutes.
Oh, that's not very long.
You can do it. I've got faith.
I don't think so, but I will try. My name is Mary Affleck. I live at six five one nine South Rappaport Lane in Meridian, the great state of Idaho. And I wanted you to have the personal side, but first I want you to know that what you approve, we live with. And you approved the subdivision to the north of us, which is East Ridge. And we lost our view with that. They built it up sixty feet, but I don't think that's in zoning or anything. We got the subdivision to the east of us and that one went from being on an acre to R four. All right. All right. R two, which is better, but some of them are still not even a half acre that they're on. And then everything else over there has just gone boom. The comprehensive plan, which we thought and you thought was going to be years in the making, right? Went boom because everybody decided to move to Idaho. And so we haven't had time to build schools, to get financing for it. And some of these things, we just have to slow down on. That's all there is to it. It has nothing to do with even going from R eight to R four, R four to R eight. It's common sense. And I saw that when Becky was here presenting her subdivision and you just said, no, because we're putting it on hold because of the school situation. And I think that we need to stop and look at that. Let me tell you some of the other things that we have to live with. First of all, we're losing our house in the front because it's too close to the road. It makes it too dangerous to have it there. We're losing a half acre of our land. We lost our view, we lost our privacy. We have our moats, don't take our canals. We hated those, they're so dangerous for kids. But now they keep us from having people come into our property all the time and we still farm that. So we have to have tractors that come up the roads with these fifty mile an hour cars and and it just gets more and more people on the roads. I don't know if we'll even have a farmer that will be able to do it this year. Last year we lost two because there's just too much traffic there and they feel it's like New York City. So we we have gained a few things. We gained all of the gophers and all of the bulls. And it's cost us over a thousand to try to get it taken care of, but we, you know how that is, it's still ongoing. The guy that came and did it said he's never seen anything like that before. So we gained that, we gained some light from the streets, we lost our stars. But now we have neighbors, right? Can I say one thing? Because this is really what I wanted to say. They were approved for they were disapproved in zoning because of the dangerous shared driveways and that was taken care of. I was grateful to see that. But the other thing that's dangerous is the fence that's going in the back. That canal is not a minor canal. We have a minor one to the to the east of us. But on the west side, it is a big canal. And when you put a fence where the kids can see it, they're going to want to be out there. If we lose our privacy, when you don't have a privacy fence there and they gain kids and I know children, trust me, I have ten grand children right now and more on the way. So anyway, just wanted you to know that I really think I'm not disagreeing with anything that you said about the the zoning or anything. It's not going to change anything it looks like on the plan. But I really would appreciate if the fence was a safer fence and more privacy for us. Thank you.
Thank you, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Questions?
Sure.
I appreciate you being here and I had read your testimony at the Planning and Zoning Commission and and having you here in person, I think is just so much.
I didn't put any testimony in, so it must have been somebody else. I was there. Oh, is that what you meant?
I was there. Testify the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
It's where I had you had you had testified again about about losing a house and losing a a family, losing your half figure lane. Was that with your engagement with the highway district or with the city? Okay. Got it. So this is, I think, what it feels like is a little bit of like Meridian's kind of moving to your front porch.
Meridian has moved to our front porch.
That's got to be first.
It doesn't feel like it, they're there. It's city.
Well, I I appreciate you being here tonight and kind of sharing your testimony, giving us kind of that flavor for how residential annexations and applications in South Meridian impact you. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Holden.
One quick question. Did you talk to my wife before you testified? Because that farm girl wife of mine would say the same thing.
I'm from Marsine. I actually lived in Meridian as a little girl and then we moved to Marsine. I hate this.
I understand.
I I like rural.
Understand, yeah, I get it every night, too.
Yeah, and I like your wife.
Council, any additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, I thought one of the interesting points that Wendy brought up was transition. Is there something that you would like to see that would make the transition better in between your property and where this property is?
Just the privacy fence. I mean, really, they're on the other side of the canal. We and the irrigation district put up signs that it was private property because since the keep has gone in, our traffic up and down that canal, both in driving and in pedestrian, has been pretty ridiculous. And they built it up, so we have all of these eyes looking down now into our property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I think what's a little bit tricky, sort of like different perspectives on the fencing thing, right? So part of our perspective is a public safety perspective of if the police department can't see what's going on next to the canal, we don't like that either. So I think that's what they were kind of getting to with the open vision fence.
Think you're going to be fairly safe there with the police department right in front of it.
Yeah, it's just, we have these standards, you know, for the, we have really standards for design in terms of the safety and.
Do you know what the canal bank looks like? You can only do, and I I'm not sure the exact regulations on this, but so far the top part is theirs and they come and spray for the weeds every year. So it's not going to be pretty to have an open look at the canal bank is what I'm saying. I don't know what you could, what they allow in it. But I've never seen where you could even have greenery around along the canal bank.
Just, Mr. Mayor, a quick follow up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Have you had a chance?
You do have gophers that come through and they have to come and take care of them every year.
I'm so sorry about the gophers and that sounds absolutely horrible and they're just, you know, nasty creatures. Some, there's too many of them. If you had a chance to talk with the Brighton folks and see if you could work something out about the fence thing, maybe maybe you could have a property, maybe a fence could be built on your property that's higher or something that would help you with the buffering between your. I'm just asking the question if you've had a chance to chat with the applicant directly about your concerns and if they've.
I I haven't, he did send me a letter before and that they were going to have a privacy fence along that side. So but I I know that they have to do by regulation, whatever you, whatever you tell them, we live with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud, like, maybe, maybe there's a scenario where there's an open fence on one side and a privacy fence on the other side. But I I don't want to get the middle of all this too much. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next we have Julie Edwards and Julie, you can unmute.
Hi there, my name is Julie Edwards and I live at thirteen, ten East Mary Lane. I wanted to go back to the actual plan for the subdivision and wanted to speak about the common driveways. And that was something that was spoke of at the P and Z meeting last week. And it wasn't only a concern for that northwest corner, it was also a concern along that eastern side where the are the two sets of common driveways. They spoke of congestion on all three of those corners. Say somebody has family in town, folks visiting a barbecue, whatnot. It not only affects the people on the common driveways, but also on that entire curve, both the inside and the outside. And so you know, I had suggested last time perhaps keeping the where they created the new open space up in that northern circle. You know, having the houses up there and instead taking those two common driveways on the east side and joining them to create a walking, a walking path and having those four four lots as green space and reducing green space elsewhere. So it was more centralized green space for that subdivision and perhaps less neighbors peering into the neighbors to the east. I guess the other thing too, I wanted to mention was that, so this is for Apex East. And so in the somewhat near future, you'll be seeing plans for Apex West where they again are showing these common driveways that I think will also pose traffic issues there as well. So I feel like if this plan is approved as is here, then they will expect that to be approved as is in the in the Apex West future plans as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Julie, appreciate your your testimony. The this topic of common drives has been hot and heavy amongst this council over the past year and I think that it sounds like maybe you've experienced some challenges with with common drives. And I know it's something I think the council pays a lot of attention to when they pop up. I'm curious, kind of from your perspective, and again, I don't know if you're in a spot that you can see what's the council's able to see right now with kind of the street access, because.
Yes.
Uh, I I followed kind of the conversation, the Planning and Zoning Commission about about trash and traffic backing up. And when I look at these, I don't see as a lot of concern about those going on. So is your is your concern just based on kind of what you've seen in the past and not wanting to replicate those challenges? Or do you feel that this particular project with these common drives bring a special set of challenges that we don't typically see?
Um, I just think it's over an overall congestion issue in, you know, more so in summer, in snow removal, if there are snowy winters. You know, what I had suggested rather than, you know, given it the way it is, somebody will buy those lots, somebody will buy those houses. And, you know, it'll be fine, I'm sure. But to ease the congestion, you know, when you're looking on the east side of that subdivision where the the northernmost common driveway is, there's four lots kind of in that corner cluster. So if you removed that common driveway and turned that, those four lots into three lots, and yes, they would be unique shapes, but, you know, I don't think people are opposed to unique shaped lots. You know, that's a space for a garden or a space to plant some fruit trees, place to put a playground for their kids. So I just think having something like that would create, you know, less congestion overall.
Thank you, Julie, appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, any additional questions? Like we have another individual coming forward to testify?
I only have three minutes, I'll be quick. I've known Mary since I was seven. We grew up in Oihe County, so we're farm girls. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, ten twenty-nine North Rosario and Meridian. I'm off my crutches, still not back to normal, trying to get there. I would just like to make the comment that I would hope the council would look at this project just as they looked at the project that I brought before you last week. Councilman Cavanagh, you said, you know, we need to take a pause. We need to look at the lots that we've put online. I calculated a hundred and sixty students, just in what Mr. Wardle indicated, they have coming online relatively quickly. This will add an additional sixty students. Their Lake Hazel Middle, their Mountain View High School, their Mary McPherson. Gem Prep South is only going to be K through five that first fall. And this council's always been very, very fair to me all these years, regardless of who was mayor, who was on the council and have treated everyone equitably and with transparency. And if you want the development community to help reach out and solve this school problem, then that pause needs to be across the board so that we can unite. If some developers, even good developers with good projects are allowed to skate under the door, even though the door slammed shut on others, then how are we going to group together and make a difference? Get our BCA, get our 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 other organizations to go lobby the legislature to get meet with the school board, to meet with your staff and solve these problems. I can't do it alone. And that's what I want to express to the council and to the mayor. I can't do it alone, my client can't do it alone. But if you do take a pause, that pause needs to be across the board to help us all get something accomplished. Thank you.
Council, any questions? You were well under.
Now I got a credit. I appreciate your time. And I know you guys work really hard at what you do and I sure appreciate it. And I'm glad to see that you're all back. And he almost made me cry. Family's everything. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to write a testament on this item? One more out there. Okay. See now if the applicant would like to come forward and as he does, Alan, just a question of if you have built, is there cross access to the keep into either one of the proposed properties? I'm just curious, looking at what the cross access is currently proposed and how that's supposed to align or not align with the one of the keep.
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, the stub street, the applicants proposing does not align with the stub street that was approved with the keep. But we we had, given the shape of, I think it was Mary's property, it is, they're both triangular. And so even though their road may come up, it may be stubbed there farther to the south, if it winds up and ties into the keep, there may be an opportunity for some integrated open space down in that lower corner around the canal, enhancing the pedestrian connectivity. And that's something that we spent with time with the applicant, trying to determine how that would work in in the long in the plan. And so we had asked them to somewhat show how that could work in the future. And this is what we got from them, but I'm sure John could elaborate on that, but no, they do not align.
Yeah, I guess that was my essential wondering if pedestrian access made more sense here than vehicle access overall, long term.
Yeah, well, yeah, when we met with the applicant, that our concern was if we didn't get a connection here, then we're forcing people onto an arterial to get to the park. But you're right, pedestrian connection can make that. We didn't want people to get in there, we hope they walk to the park because it's so close, but being human nature, because the keep doesn't have an access to Eagle Road either. There are two accesses come off of, or excuse me, off of Lake Hazel, there are two accesses come off of Eagle Road. And I don't believe there's a stub street to the south either from the keep because of the lateral. So really, the keep has two ways in and out only. And then so if we don't get connection between these these two properties, then everyone's going out on arterial get to the to the park or have to wait for other properties to the south to develop and create that collector road that we have planned out there. So it's a timing issue, really.
Okay, thank you. About that, John.
Mr. Mayor, council, for the record again, John Wardle. Again, thank you for letting me come back up tonight and just have a couple of comments before we conclude the meeting or at least our part of the hearing tonight. Just, it it's important to just re to hit this point again that there was an annexation done in South Meridian that included thirteen hundred acres. There were plans made, both transportation wise, public work wise, and also anticipation by the school district of what would happen out here. So those have been built in. Are there are there capacity issues? There are. Are there solutions? There are some easy, some hard, some probably haven't even been put out on the table, but there are conversations. But this is, this is the way that this has been done. Are there better ways? Yes, but there are mechanisms. And we feel like we have been able to come together and provide some really good planning for transportation and for schools. We understand what you're saying, but the prop or what has been said. But this property is annexed and zoned, it's in the city. There's been provisions made for those things. I understand what what Ms. McKay has said tonight. But candidly, their project isn't annexed, they're making a request. And we we have, we are annexed and the city made a provision out here that at the point in time the development community came forward with plans, it was anticipated that rezones would occur. it was anticipated that rezones would occur, and they would be, uh, the guide for that is the future land use map. I have interacted with Wendy over the years. She's been involved in our meetings. She and a couple of other Southern Room Coalition members came to our office pre-COVID. I do know that she did post out on Facebook about this request. I did take exception to it. Actually tried to interact with some of the neighbors on on Facebook. The what was put out to the membership was this application goes before planning and zoning. The developer's asking for a change in zoning. The parcel is zone R four. Minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet and sixty foot minimum streets. They're asking to change to a zoning of R eight, which is a minimum four thousand square feet and forty feet minimum frontages. What do you think? There was no discussion until I brought it up in that conversation about what the proposal really was. And so, of course, I'm going to raise my hand and say, yeah, I don't want an R eight lot. They're four thousand square foot lots, but there was no context. And when I tried to interact with members and it, you know, it's social media, you you do what you're going to do. I know, Mr. Cavanagh, you're out there every week, uh, taking hits here and there. I thought context was important, but it wasn't. It wasn't mentioned. So with that said, again, the future land use map did anticipate medium density residential. We are sensitive to the issues that have been raised. One of the things regarding the the canal between us and the Affleck property is the canal sits high. It's about five feet on our side. The canal is five feet higher than the property we have below. And that easement is at the toe of that slope. And so any fencing, whether it was solid or private or open, it wouldn't clear basically the the canal. The canal access just to sit high. And so even if that was an opportunity and the city does have the preference for open metal, a solid fence wouldn't help either way, unfortunately, given the location of that canal. Just in conclusion, a precedent has been set. The precedent here is the city made a request of property owners to bring those properties in and that the anticipation was that they would rezone in the future. You see what's in front of you in this future land use map. If we roll back to twenty fifteen, none of this property would show that being in the city. And if we requested to be annexed into the city today, we would go back to the future land use map. We did have a conversation with staff early in the process. We did consider doing an R four zone, but because of these small tweaks on the changes in frontages as well as the square footages, we felt like by keeping the density low, but providing the open space, that this would not be out of character for the area. It is different, for sure, very sensitive to what what the Affleck's have experienced. You know, now being surrounded on all sides. And also, I I know that they have, they've worked and we need to, you know, applaud them or thank them. But they've worked closely with the county highway district to come up with a way that that roadway could get expanded, and that is an impact to them. So I don't want that to be minimized either. The last item that I just wanted to hit was there, there's a lot of discussion about common drives. And in fact, and the most recent UDC, or maybe it was the one before, there was a modification, reducing the number of homes on these common drives. We we recognize both what the concerns may be or are. In this case, we're doing two homes on each common drive, so it's minimal. The other option is to do large wedges with, you know, the requirement of the city is thirty feet of frontage. Um, and in this case, we have a common drive, which is effectively the same thing for a couple of lots. Welcome the opportunity to have that conversation with staff further about common drives. But we do, um, we we are working within the zoning ordinance that's there, and we've tried to minimize that. We do recognize that there are decisions and discussions that need to occur. But in the case of this project with the mass annexation that did occur, those decisions did happen. And the city provided the mechanism by which rezones could happen within the context of the project. Again, we are annexed and zoned, and we're just asking for a modification with an R eight zone. We've noted the the conditions that are not relevant, given that we aren't doing attached homes. And we also are in agreement with staff's recommendation on modifying some of those pathways or modifying the pathway in the southeast. One note, I looked at the plans really closely or quickly. But I did want to confirm for Councilman Perro that we actually do have pedestrian ramps and receiving on each side at that intersection. That's built into the plan. And so when that road is built, those pedestrian connections will occur there, there, there and there where the public roads are. We are asking for your approval of this project. Modification of the findings that Planning and Zoning Commission pass on to you as a recommendation. Um, and so that the preliminary plat could be approved, uh, the DA could be modified, um, including the rezone to R eight. And I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
If you guys could go back to the site plan really quick. Yeah. One thing that's kind of driving me crazy is, you know, somebody here on one of the common drives on the east side, just the amount of it kind of walking around they'd have to do to get that connectivity to the other side. I actually thought one of the folks provided some interesting testimony and we don't like common drives, clearly. This fits. It's not a huge amount off of common drives. But did you guys consider, you know, running that road through, making more of an A shape? Just because it does, the connectivity just feels a little cramped here in terms of how somebody would get, you know, maybe to access the open space, for example, in the northern part of the property. Like they'd have to really walk a pretty circuitous route. Just wondered if you thought about extending that road as was suggested?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, we actually did look at making that road continuous. One of the negatives of that is then the road becomes too long, and then we have to provide traffic calming. So here's the give and take, right? And so we intentionally didn't make that connection. You know, we kind of have some built in traffic calming over here with the way these intersections, but that would be one continuous road with just homes on the side in front of it. We have done other projects where we've had a common drive and then we've continued it a pathway through. That's, I think that's a good suggestion we could look at there. And, you know, basically, there would be a common lot through. The common drive for that one would stop there, but then a pathway would come through connecting both of those. But given that we're just talking about, you know, really two homes that access it, you know, we don't feel like it will be overloaded by, you know, with some of the concerns. I think the changes that the city made, reducing that, you know, the number that you could put on there was a very good change. Um, and I think we have, we've tried to use them in a location where you do get a little constrained on the frontages. And this is the the design that we feel will will work well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I just want to make a comment, just like where my head's at, um, in terms of South Meridian. You know, I'm I'm really struggling with adding any additional students to this area right now. And I know you guys have brought Gem Prep. You donated land, so I feel like you're exceptionally proactive. And, you know, I appreciate that. If this was an R four, it'd go right through, be entitled, there'd be no discussion. And maybe this is, I'm talking aloud, maybe this is what the purpose of a moratorium really is, to take that pause and have an equal playing field for everybody while we all get on the same page. We we can't even get our arms around the students that are going to be delivered on an annual basis in this area. I'm I'm just having a really hard time conceptually with that. And this rezone is the only leg to stand on to say no to this. I also don't. It feels a little cramped in some areas to me as well. But that's just, that's just kind of where I'm at. And it's, it's hard because it's not, it's not Brighton's fault. I think you guys are doing all the right things. I'm just sympathetic with the argument, like, why are we considering development in this area at this time until we can figure this out? But this is annexed, so it it is a little, it is a little different, just talking out loud.
Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Recognize the applicants here before us, but I I appreciate kind of the vocalizing kind of what's in your head. And I guess maybe I'll I'll continue on some of that because frankly, when I, when I looked at this week's agenda, that's exactly where I started is where Councilmember Schrader did. I think that's where the struggle is, is if this was an annexation before us, I don't, I don't think I would be supportive. But it is annexed. And and the piece that I'm I'm wrapping my head around is what is the least amount of harm to the schools at this point, right? What is going to generate the least amount of students? So does this at just a hair at three units per acre generate more students? Or, which I think was a really unique suggestion from Councilmember Borton, which is, let's hold to the R four. Let's reduce some of the open space because we've got this great park. We know in doing so, though, it's likely some additional units are going to come on with that. And then adding not a overwhelmingly amount, but every student really matters in these conversations. And so that's, I I started where you are. I don't know quite where I've I've landed, but I appreciate your perspective on that. There's not a question for the applicant about that, but I did have a question, if I can, Mr. Mayor, just about that that collector that feeds into the neighborhood. I appreciate that there aren't homes that obviously are accessing that. But just past experience has shown, you put a collector near a park, that becomes del facto parking for softball games. I assume you guys put some thought into that. What's the width around it? Are we gonna, are we gonna sign it? No parking? Are we gonna sign it? No parking one side? I just, I I know that this gets built. And one of these future residents are going to call the city upset that softball players are parking on the street. And Mr. Nary's been through those rounds. I've been through those rounds. Settler, I mean, Settlers Park, you look at Mountain View High School, you name the park, people go to the least, you know, parking of least resistance. So maybe, I know I just threw a lot at you. I'm curious kind of your thought response to the work that you guys put in to maybe address that. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, we had the same thought, same concerns. So as we've been working with the highway district and the city of Meridian on this cooperative development agreement to get this road built as well as Lake Hazel, we were adamant that there be no parking on recreation. Our conversations, at least on our side, and I can go back and I can look at that, but no parking, at least on the east side of the road. Our conversations, I believe, with city staff was that there there would be sufficient parking inside. I know exactly what you're saying about Settlers Park. You find a place to park on the street, and that's what's going to happen. The idea here is to to make it not convenient for that to occur on that public road. Will there be somebody who parks in the neighborhood? There will. And hopefully, our neighbors decide that they can just walk across the street and not drive their cars over there, which would be good as well. But this, that's a design element where we are not having parking on recreation on our side. If you give me a moment, I can look and some notes, or I can clarify it in a follow up later on. Mr. Mayor. My suggestion would have been on on your side to sign it, no parking. So if at least that's where it's headed, that that's sufficient, at least for me. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Just real quick, uh, John, you know, is the conversation revolved around the common lots? And with the common drive in those lots, and and you certainly are well within, we did reduce that from four to three, and you went with two. So that to me is, you're you're doing it right and whatnot. But I was just wondering if you take the two middle lots and throw those back to where that the bigger open space is there at the northwest? And then make, yeah, up there and put those side by side, kind of like you had previously, and then put some more open space right there. And then you just use the common drive for one, one lot. But that's to me, it it, and then you, then you build in the little pathway, put in the bollards there for the driveway, so people can't drive through, but they just walk through and then use that that as open space to walk the dog, whatnot. But that's the only thing I could see that I'd go, I'd be interested in that. But over overall, it's 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 a good deal. But is that work? I mean, that seems like it's one stumbling block overall. It's it's a, it's a great project, and you heard my comments about value. You're adding value to the community in a bigger way than I think you are in our, would have been R four.
Mr. Mayor, I Councilman Hoagland, I appreciate the comment about some some redesign elements here. There obviously is a chance to fine tune that at a final plat, just to see if we can make some of those changes. I I do, you you mentioned the word value, and I just want to I'm going to just maybe drive this point home. When there was a transportation question in South Meridian, Brighton stepped up to come up with a solution to work through that. When there has been a question about schools, Brighton has stepped up, not only with donations of land for a charter school, but also the promise for a future public school. I I appreciate that we are all in this together. But we, I think we also need to recognize that we all need to be doing similar things and not just letting somebody else do it. This is not a woe is me moment. We're very intentional in doing this because we know that the communities we want to create need to be lasting value. And so let's try to do something where we can get the infrastructure in place. I understand the conversation regarding schools and education. But in this case, we don't feel it's applicable. We are annexed into the city. Yes, could we come back with an R four zone and meet the dimensional standards? And like what likely add a few more lots? Yes. And we would meet the criteria. Not not trying to diminish that conversation, and it's a good conversation. But it's a conversation that our our partners at West Ada need to be involved in as well. And I I just hopeful that you can recognize that this has already been considered in the overall planning of South Meridian. So I just wanted to kind of drive that point home that the value that we're creating it isn't just for this project. There's value for a much greater community where we're trying to make things happen sooner than later.
Also, any additional questions, comments? I'll I'll just weigh in with a few comments from my perspective. And to your, to your point, you could have come in with an R four, not even gone through this process and put in whatever you felt was appropriate. But you took the time to go through the process to create what you think is a better project for whatever reasons from your standpoint or otherwise. I think that there's, there's value in that even occurring, uh, because you already were entitled. Maybe you would have had have done something, but may not have had to ask for a rezone, et cetera. The city did, in my opinion, you know, I was not a staff, I was a staff member, wasn't up here, but there was a commitment to the property owners down here, that hopefully the development would occur at the right time. And this project is already moving forward. It's already annexed in a lot of ways down here. And the the things that you spoke about, the investments, improvements that you are helping make for the community does speak volumes about what is being done. Just on the basis of this project personally, I think, like I said, you could have done this without coming before us, in my opinion, with small touches, but you're trying to make it better. And I think that that's a testament to, it's kind of, I'm going to attribute this to Phil McGrane, talking about something in a campaign election that maybe he didn't even have to bring up because only people would know with the people behind the scenes, if they'd never talked about ballots not being rotated properly. Because it takes integrity to come forward and talk about projects in a time when people are questioning projects and have an open conversation about the what you're trying to do and why, and let the dialogue occur. So hopefully that, hopefully for council, you know, we do have to take everything on their own merits and their own ways at their own times. But not every project is equal and the same. And I think that's been proven out by this council for years in a lot of different ways. Last project in. Last project in on McMillan Road gets denied for five acres, was surrounded by everybody else. Because they're the straw that broke the camel's back. Everything is taken at the time. It's considered for its own merits for that reason. So encourage your dialogue and consideration on it, but I applaud you for, quite frankly, day lighting the proposal and bringing it forward and talking about everything that's occurring and giving the, the community an opportunity to weigh in when you probably could have avoided that if you really wanted to in a lot of ways.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
It was pretty clear where I thought it made the most sense. It's a great project that's a hair away from R four. I'd be supportive of it as an R four. Even if it was, it had an additional lot. I think it's a good example where open space should be minimal, if at all. Because it's adjacent to a regional park. Sounded like and it looked like in the presentation, there were some minor adjustments that could be made that would allow this still to have the same number of lots, still be as successful as designed and and maintain that existing zoning. We'd see a pre-platen DA modification. And it might look almost identical. You probably could solve the issues up in the northwest corner. So the extent that it's annexed with that zone, it would have proceeded, assuming the platen and the DA modification. So our community brings up, makes some good points on their end of it too, that we all take to heart. So that's, I'm leaning to asking for those minor adjustments and seeing R four application look very similar to this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I, I respect Councilman Borton's, you know, consideration and, and what he views. My, my view is a little bit different. To me, that R four is, was a placeholder as, as they, they talked about. And I, I looked to the future land use map, what it was, and that's medium density. And that's what this is, it meets. So this, this, this was to come before, before us, whether Susan Karns made it happen or not. That was the plan from the beginning for that placeholder. So development projects would come in and we could take a look at them and, and have this discussion about what that looks like. And, and to me, this, this meets improved value over that R four designation. And, and I think that's important to the Southern Rim Coalition residents. It's not saying, hey, you know, we're just ignoring your concerns, but it's actually considering that if this has a higher value, then that's a good thing for that whole community out there. And, and I know, Mary, it's not going to be the same as it was, but at least the value is, 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 is going to be improved if, if we move forward with, with this, this request. Just kind of, kind of my take on it, a little bit different than Councilman Borton's, but just how, how I view it.
Councilman Schrader.
Where I'm probably going to land on this, at the end of the day, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission's reasoning was well thought out. I want to support them. I feel like this is owned in R four. I am not supportive at this time of future annexations in South Meridian until we get the school issue figured out. I'd like to see what an R four would look like. I wonder if it, how, how, how it would look. I think it's possible that there'll be a little more density. Maybe not. You know, I, I'd like to see what that looks like. I don't think the request was a huge ask. I just think, given the cute situation in this area, I'm going to stick to my guns on the R four. That's where I'm landing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I don't, I don't see any benefit necessarily personally to, to, to see this as an R four versus what it's been proposed. I, I like the preliminary plat, other than the, the few exceptions that we talked about, design changes that the applicant seems amicable to make. And no issue with the DA modification, but still very much concerned about schools. And I, I'm hearing the, the public loud and clear about keeping consistency as we make these decisions. And I am wondering if the mayor believes that the future meeting that we're going to have with West State of School District here in the next month or so will provide enough information to us about this area of Meridian that it may give us more clarity on this project and whether we should consider continuing it until after we have that, or is it going to be a high level meeting? That's really going to be about Meridian as a whole and sort of a district wide type of conversation. And I'm wondering if you could share your thoughts on that so that 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 would help me have some understanding about whether we could potentially wait and see if the district has some solutions for Southeast Meridian in the near future. Which is the reason that we postponed the Centerville application.
I think Centerville was also hoping that the legislature would come forward with some proposals related to schools as well as much. I, I mean, you're asking me a crystal ball on what two new trustees even bring to the table and I think they created a new board chair on Monday night. So we have a new board chair leadership with a new vice chair. And at the end of the day, even if they decided to run bonds and tell us that they're going to run bonds, but they aren't going to do that till next September. If that was their solution, what does that mean to this council? You know? So I can't, I can't answer in a real meaningful way for you, what the outcome of that conversation may or may not provide in determining what to do about these situations. That's the best I can do for you today. You know, I, I've not spoken with either of the new trustees, but have any idea what their thoughts are on these issues.
Thank you.
Councilman Cavan.
Replaying a lot of the past eight years in my head tonight. No tears, I promise. But I was one of the two council members that was a part of this when we approved this mass annexation in part to protect our, our border and to more accurately plan for our city long term. And so it's a good reminder that while I knew that, it sounds like maybe, and we did many public hearings, that was also six, seven years ago. Maybe a good opportunity in particular is we're starting to see some requests come in that we do maybe a refresh with our citizens, remind them of the history. But I'm also like hearing visions and envisioning Susan Karns up here telling us to follow the flume and to look at that. And I think the flume has been such an important piece in part because of this mass annexation. And so to council member Hoagland's point, this has been listed medium density residential. It's, it's also the reason, when do I ask, do you know, what would be the basis that you would support a, a rezone? Because for me, if it, if it results in a lower density, what, that, that's something that I can get, maybe wrap my heads around. And I think this project does that. And I know it's silly that we're talking about one or two or three units, and that maybe means one or two or four or five students. But right now in South Meridian, four or five students makes a difference. I, I appreciate Ms. McKay sitting through our long meeting and providing some good context of the totality of that, about this project. I don't think any member of the council would ever want to hold a project as a political tactic to further our efforts. We appreciate what you and your colleagues across the valley are trying to do to help us solve these problems. And like I mentioned, frankly, if this was an annexation request, I would be in support. But that ship sailed. We annexed it. We're, we're paying the piper for the decision that we made to plan better six, seven years ago. So because I think that this project would result in a lower impact to our schools than if this came through as a regular R four. And because I think the changes that the applicant has made in response to Planning and Zoning Commission, I think I'm supportive. I also hold though, like we all do, the recommendation of planning and zoning in high regard. And I read the minutes multiple times, why I was recalling your testimonies. I read the minutes and this a lot of them, and the Planning and Zoning Commission really wrestled with that particular piece. But I, I think that I could be supportive of the rezone request. I think it, it ultimately is a better project than if this came through as an R four, this particular project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
The, the schools issue pops up again and it's not going to be the last time that it pops up again. And, and that's one, again, you heard me last, last week on this. I'll jump on the soapbox real quick. I, I, I don't think we can pull out the rug from under the developers who were before us previously and are coming before us that have applications in the pipeline. And all of a sudden just say, oh, nope, too late. It's an issue now. I, I think we have to look to a point in the future and say, okay, from that point forward, there's going to be a moratorium or whatever you want to call it. But I think we have to act on these as we have been, and this one's entitled. I mean, this one really is a, a, a stronger case. I know annexations, you, you can, you have, have, we have more leeway on that, but even that one, because of the timing, the investment they make, the understanding of what the community is doing to not be heard basis on the application and what we're doing. And, and I, I look at this location, you know, Councilman Morton, you point out to, and you know, and there's, there's good arguments about, well, you're right next to a park. Why do you need this open space, you know, and the R four argument? Yeah, you know, right next to that, that was our, it's a priority growth area. We did that and we did it intentionally. And now we're doing phase two and we're going to do a police station. I mean, a fire station is being built and someday a, a police station. So are we putting those on pause? If we're going to put all development on pause, then stop spending money on that then. And I don't think that's the intent. I think we have to move forward with our responsibilities of water, sewer, police, fire response times, those types of things, and working in conjunction with West Ada. We've got to get this figured out, or at least make sure we all have the same information and keep it flowing so they can make informed decisions on what's coming, where they are in the process, and we know the same thing. And, and I'm, I, I, and if there's going to be a major crisis, then yes, we, we would have to tap the brakes. And Councilman Strader is, is correct in that we need to get that information. We need to understand it. But again, I think, okay, we need to do that. There's a process to do that. There's time to do that. So let's go out here to that future point and say, okay, we're going to handle all these based on their merits under the today's considerations. And then when we reach that point in time, if that information comes in, then we can say, we're, after that, nothing, nothing further. To me, that's, that's just a matter of fairness. That's a matter of working together with other community partners who've invested a lot of money, time and energy into this, including properties for schools to, to, to make things happen, to meet the demand that's occurring in our community. It's, it's a big challenge, but that's still, okay, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I'm, I'm, I'm still there.
With that, council, are there any motions? Anyone like to make the close of public hearing or otherwise?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we close the public hearing on H 2021 dash zero zero eight six.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor sign by saying aye.
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 Opposed name? The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Briefly, Mike, John, I, I made it kind of clear where I'm coming from. It sounds like this, this thing has got the votes to go forward. We voting against it just for those reasons. I just, I wish it was, those minor adjustments were made as an R four. Reasons explained. Not a fan of open space in this circumstance. It's unnecessary. If it provided an extra lot, so be it. I just think it can get better. Utilizing the zone that's existing and the end result would be better. So just for those reasons, we'll be voting against what I think will be a motion. Just wanted to give that explanation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm still struggling. I'm just having a really hard time with it, being open about it. I think what I'm really struggling with is, you know, it's okay to say when we think it's catastrophic, we'll turn off the pipeline. But I, I'm not, I'm not getting alignment around when that is. And I think we had the former chairwoman of the West State of School District tell us that we are in a catastrophic situation. It is catastrophic is what I'm hearing and I'm, I'm just really struggling. I'm a no on annexations in this area going forward. I think in this case, Councilman Cavan made a pretty compelling argument that maybe the rezone actually does result in a smaller, fractionally smaller delivery of students. I wish we could take a pause. Much prefer taking a pause as Councilwoman Perro suggested. In the absence of that, I do think the, the R eight is probably the right answer. I just, we, we've got to get to some alignment around this. And when is that time? You know, I, I think that a moratorium makes a lot of sense to, to give us the time, then whether it's six months, these folks are going to have a very easy time delivering 250 units in this area of Meridian already. I don't think that would slow down their business plan that much, but I think in this case, I probably will vote for it given the investment that they've made in the schools themselves. I think the developer rose to a level of providing a charter school, providing additional land for West Ada. They have proactively helped solve the problem. And that's probably enough to get me to change my vote, but I'm just really uncomfortable. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Councilmember Pro won't be upset, but she kind of mentioned this one, you know, you get heartburn every week and I, I don't think that there's anybody that's up here excited about the decisions that we're making right now, whether it's approval or delay or denial. I mean, each of these have big challenges and I think that we hear from so many in our community that make good points. So I think that we're all on the same page. This is these are always challenging conversations. I think until we've got a clear pathway about how we can or can't move forward, we're gonna, I'll start bringing the Tums because I think we're going to need a lot of them. I, I did have a question for Councilmember Strader. You had inquired during kind of some of your pontificating about a pathway being connected between those common lots. Is that something that you were hoping would be included within the developer agreement? I mean, it sounded like the applicant was open to that. I just, I wanted to make sure that should a motion be made that we're capturing at least all the elements that council had talked about tonight.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I do think the pedestrian pathway would be really helpful in that area at a minimum, just connectivity.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I have a question for Alan or Bill Parsons on on a motion. There, there's a lot of moving parts on, on what they had asked for. I mean, we're, we, we are, you know, I would make a motion for the preliminary plat and development agreement modification with the, the DA modification of staff recommendations. And there were some things about modifying the rezone and preliminary plat, but I may have that wrong.
Mayor, members of the council, I can probably shed some light on that. As you know, this came to you with a recommendation of denial. So essentially we struck all the conditions of approval because there aren't any because it came to you. So if you're going to reinstate an approval, then the, the, the conditions of approval that we had written prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission are still in place. And so that's why the applicant brought it up is because they've modified the plan based on what the commission asked for. So we just had to make sure that your motion includes those conditions to be changed to reflect the revised landscape plan and pre-plat that was shared with you that night and any additional conditions of approval you want with in specifically to that micro path location that you want, center of the development. in specifically to that micro path location that you want center of the development.
Just to add counsel, the, the plot and the landscape plan that you've seen tonight, the open space was produced today. So it would have been dated today.
Mayor, council, and then staff will update the findings accordingly if, if you choose to approve the project.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
See if that happens or not. So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2021 dash zero zero eight six as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of January 11th, 2022. With the modifications that were brought by the applicant to council and with the plan that's dated today, January 11th. That's before us. And I think that is inclusive of everything.
Oh. Does that include the trail connection that was proposed between the two common driveways?
Uh, no, it does not for my motion.
I'll second for, please get the discussion going.
Seven motion and a second.
Councilwoman Strater, Mr. Mayor, if I might ask her a question.
Councilman Hogland.
What was that specific? I remember you talking about that and then there was that, and I, I didn't know if that, I, I kind of thought that went away, but I could be wrong. So if you could explain that to me again.
There are two common drives on the east side and currently for pedestrians to access the open space, they have to take a pretty circuitous route through the entire development. If there's a small pedestrian pathway, which I don't think is a huge ask. It sounded like applicant was open to, I thought it would make it better, but I agree. I don't think that a tiny pathway is the thing that would sway my vote at this point. I've already really wrestled with it, but I'll leave it up to you if you want to include that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
What's worth, I, I can go either way. I, I, I know of a family that kind of is in this scenario and what it becomes is again, that their, their drive aisle essentially becomes a del facto pathway. So people are kind of crossing through all the time and it's, it has been, at least for this person that I know, a little bit of a unintended hindrance that they didn't expect. I think it's well intended. It's a trade off again of connectivity versus maybe a perceived invasion of privacy. We all are very protective of our homes. I think that there's, there's a benefit of keeping it or a benefit of not.
Question has been called. Quick call roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perro.
No.
Strater.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
And Burnt is abstaining.
Three ayes, two noes and the motion passes. Thank you. So we want to continue moving. Don't use a break. Just get through this next part.
Let's go.
All right. Next item up is item five to the council. Election of new city council officers and department liaison appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll start off this conversation and then
Councilmember.
And then we'll see where it goes. I just, as we all know, these, uh, these council president terms are basically for two years and, and tonight's the last night that I will be council president and just want to say, and there's not a whole lot to say from my previous comments. Other than first, mayor, I wanted to thank you. It's been a delight working with you for the past couple of years.
Ditto.
We haven't always agreed.
Once.
And we, and we, we certainly, we've certainly had some animated discussions, but at the end of the day, they've but, but we've, but we've always come out at the end of those conversations, friends. Out of respect for each other and I really do appreciate that. And with that said, that you know, Keith Byrd, who was my predecessor and have spoken about this before, we call it the Keith Byrd rule and it will, I'm so grateful that this council continues to honor that rule in the sense that, you know, when we do have disagreements and when we do sit on the opposite side of the fences, we always at the end of the day, have enough respect for each other in the seats that we, that we occupy that we can, you know, give each other bro hugs and call it a night and the next day we're off to solving other problems and, and and having other discussions. So I, this council is absolutely amazing and all the different perspectives and all of the different backgrounds that we have that bring insight and deliberation and and a pragmatic approach is what it's, it's, and the consistency is so important and that's what I'm extremely grateful for. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you for your support. On the last couple of years, it's been a delight. Mr. Mr. Hogland, you've been a great vice president. Your dear friend and you know, I love you like a brother. And so at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Brad Hogland as the next council president.
I have a motion, a second to, for Brad Hogan to be the next council president. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I'm glad you chose to have seen from the vote this evening.
Okay. If there's no further comments, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed name? Ayes have it. Congratulations. Back to your new position.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think I appreciate it. Just to comment quickly, you know, thank you for the privilege of serving as council president. I, I, I go in with the eyes open. This is going to be tough, tough year. But I, I want to thank Councilman Burton for what he's done the last two years. I mean, this has been a difficult two years. And, and Councilman Burton, you and Mayor Simison did some amazing things to allow, working with the city clerk and other city departments to bring about the ability for the business of our government, of our city to keep moving forward. And I think it's done in a way that it's going to continue. Once all this thing is, what are back to normal, whatever that looks like. We have created a better way for people to interact with their city government, provide testimony and to be here virtually. And I, I think that's a, that's a fantastic things, thing. And it was a little messy at first. I mean, there were hiccups and everything, but but improvements were made and we got through it and, and that's, that's a great thing. You know, we do face the challenges of, of phenomenal growth in this community. I mean, it's evident tonight, you know, and these are hard decisions. But, you know, along with, with the difficult decisions will come these differences of opinions. And that's just the way it's going to be. And how, how do we deal with these things? But, but it's okay. We won't agree on every course of action. But I think what I know about each and every one of you up here, whether you're in person or happen to be online on any particular meeting is your heart, your intent, your desire is to make Meridian a better place. And that makes a great difference that 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 is what you want, even though we don't always see eye, we'll see eye to eye on that, but I know that's, that's a good thing. I, I respect the intent of everybody up here and, and and I know you believe that of others up here. It's, it's a good working group. You know, I, I just hope we can be a good example, continue to be a good example to our community members out there, our citizens, that you don't have to agree on everything a hundred percent and get along. You can still have good debate and discussion and in the end disagree. But you can do so without being disagreeable. And you can still respect the other person to walk away and, and understanding that, hey, what, what they believe, they believe and it's right for them. So I, I, I appreciate that. And, and I do look forward to a exciting 2022. I don't know how else to put that challenging. It, it's going to be what unfolds. One of, one of the good things about coming up and, and taking a leadership position is, is that there's a vice president and, and I'm excited to have someone who I greatly respect. Thinks very well, looks at things through a lens that I, I learned from. And I think will be
You know, I can't accept the
Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I, I really think I, I, I
It's late, I'm sorry.
That, that was a good one. Actually, that was pretty good. I, I would nominate Joe Borton to serve as vice president for Meridian City Council.
Second. I have a motion, a second for Joe Warner to serve as vice president. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? The ayes have it. Councilman Hogland, anything else for these?
I, I didn't, unless the vice president has any comments.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just briefly, is it just on behalf of the entire council to thank Greg Burton for being an outstanding president for two years. The manner in which you lead and the continuity to Mr. Hogland. It's just a culture of compassion and collaboration. So I just, I appreciate the remarks both of you make about working together as a team. And we're better because we don't agree on everything all the time. But we always seem to listen and show respect and try to learn from each other, different experiences, different backgrounds. So if it helps us make better decisions, the city wins. So the fact that you led that way is greatly appreciated and Councilman Hogland, it sounds like you're teed up, ready to continue leading in that same fashion. So look forward to working with you.
Do the department liaison.
Yeah, department liaisons. You had that list. I have the list. Or department liaisons.
Councilman Hogland.
You, you, you received my, don't I get to run the meeting as president now? No, I'm not the mayor. Just to, to lay out, one of the reasons I, I did what I did for, I wanted to make sure our, our council members who are new. Councilwoman Strater, Councilwoman, uh, woman Perro are going through the process of different departments and making sure they have that new experience and until you know, previously having served, I've, I've made that circuit and been in everyone. And I know for the, these folks have served longer. It's, it's, you know, you'll, you'll get some departments you've, you previously served, but that's all right. For community development, Councilwoman Strater will work with them. For fire department, Councilman Borton. For parks, Councilman Cavanagh, police, Councilman Burke and public works, Councilwoman Perro. So those are the ones for our direct city departments and we'll be coming forward with some other community partners that, that we have to set up in place and have that moving forward. So that will, that's to come. But for council liaison to city departments, that's the setup for tonight.
Thank you. And just a preview, legal will be bringing forward an ordinance with some changes to align some of the city council changes regarding ex officio and other elements. I don't know if that's going to be next week or the week after in a department report for consideration, but you'll be seeing that soon enough.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think our intent was to bring a resolution on liaisons for next week. And I think, I think Ms. Kane had prepared a draft already of the ordinance changes as well. I think those in regards to the duties and responsibilities, I think that's going to be on there.
Okay. All right. With that, anything on a future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just, yes, I know I'm, I'm kind of rehashing this, but I, I would, I think it's important that we have either as a, as a workshop conversation or a main meeting. Just a we guys are running in the same direction when it comes on this land use stuff. I, I think it's challenging that we play some of the philosophical challenges that we're facing with an applicant, with an application before us. And so if this council is saying we, we, we want to do a moratorium, we want to do a pause, we want to explore other options that are pathways for the impacts on schools and roads to be resolved. I think that we've got to we've got to lay out a date that we're going to start doing that. And so I appreciate council member, uh, council president Hogland's comments tonight. And that, so I don't know if that is a, a workshop session or a general meeting, but I just, I I'd like a date on the calendar or at least a plan of when we're going to get that date on the calendar so that we can, we can have that conversation.
It's on, do we know for Councilman Hogland to, uh, help lead that conversation forward?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Mayor, one of the things to, to respond to that quickly is, is I, I do think we want to meet with the, the, the schools to make sure we have an understanding of how they're doing, what they're, say they're doing now when it comes to those types of things and begin that process. And then I think then we can take, start taking next steps based on that information we see. Hopefully that it will allow us to determine what direction we move in. I, I don't know. It's kind of, we're building the airplane a little bit as we're flying it, which is a little scary, but you know, we'll, we'll figure it out.
With that, do I have any other future meeting topics or motion?
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.